... Justice Brown.
One more silence, please. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Philbin.
Present.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Houghton.
Here.
Mr. Morelli.
Here.
Mr. Harry.
Here.
Ms. Sedman.
Here.
Mr. Schnee.
Present.
Mr. Erden. Mr. Vogt.
Here.
Ms. Wacus.
Present.
Mr. McGinnis.
Present. Just noted that we have two people on the phone this evening, Mr. Vogt and Mr. Schnee. Thought Mr. Erden also would be calling in, but this time he's not on. Moving down to additions, deletions from the work session agenda. Do we have any? If not, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Ms. Wacus and Ms. Morelli, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Our first item is the Luzerne County Retirement System. And we have with us Mr. Hazori and I'm not sure your last name.
Stumpf.
Stumpf. Who was the actuary for this, for that retirement system, correct?
Yes.
Very good. So we asked them to make a presentation and then answer questions. This is as a result of a request that Mr. Haas has made and arrived to the retirement system. So we asked you to come so everyone could hear that and have an opportunity to look at the potential options, okay? Turn it over to the gentleman at the desk there.
Just let me give you a little background, our background on ourselves first. I'm Greg Stumpf. I'm the chief actuary for Boomer Schein Consulting Group out of Baltimore. I've been working with this retirement system for about 10 years now. I work for about three dozen other retirement systems in Pennsylvania, Mid-Atlantic area, and some other states. Public pensions I've been working on for about 20 years. And what my job here is, once a year, we collect data on the plan. Everybody's benefit amounts, service salary, things like that. And come up with funding progress, compare the assets to what we think, you know, they need to be at a certain point in time, and come up with a contribution recommendation, which is, you know, what's going to go into the budget. So I do have a summary sheet to hand out for you. Every year we produce a report that's about 20 pages. So to spare you that, I'm going to just give you a two-page version today. So I'll let Rich introduce himself while I'm passing this out.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rich Hazori. I'm an institutional consulting director at Morgan Stanley. We represent institutional investors such as Luzerne County. Translates to about $310 billion in assets under management. Our relationship, my team's relationship with the Luzerne County pension goes back to 2008, actually October of 2008. We serve in a fiduciary capacity alongside of the retirement board, covering such things as investment policy construction, asset allocation modeling, manager search, selection, due diligence. We do report to the board on a quarterly basis regarding performance, and again, all things fiduciary. Greg and I have worked closely together since 2009. We do not operate, I do not operate, our team doesn't operate in a vacuum. We do and use a lot of the work that Greg does from an actuarial perspective and translate that into economic reality and investments.
Okay, let me, let me first explain why I brought this hand out with me. I know, first and foremost, I am here to answer your questions. Absolutely, that's, that's, that's number one reason. I do a lot of these meetings. I work with pension boards and I do presentations like this for work groups, city councils, county councils. And I think it's helpful to provide the background and put things in context because you don't deal with it every day, or maybe not even every year. So let me just briefly go over what we have here. The first section is called "History of Funding." First thing we need to acknowledge is that funding has declined for pension plans nationwide since 2009, and some even before that. That's true for the county system, and we'll talk about that in more detail. The funding was reported at 86% in 2012. So if you looked at the financial reporting for the retirement system, it said 86%. However, that's, there were some different rules back then, and if the new rules were applied then, it really would have been 75%. They, they allowed the reporting to defer some investment losses back at that time. So there's a graph there on the first page which shows 2012 to 2019, most recent. The reason I picked that as a starting point is that's kind of after the last recession and things were kind of recovering by then. At that point in time, now you can see there's a red line which is unfunded liability. It matches up with the red numbers on the left. Those are millions. There are blue bars that are the funding ratios. If, if you know anything about a pension plan, you probably know the return assumption and the funding ratio. There's usually numbers people throw around, "Well, what's your funding ratio?" And you try to make an assessment of the plan based on just that one number. Well, it was 86%. Now it's 71%. We're going the wrong direction. But you really can't make an assessment just on the one number. So let's put these in a little more context. So the unfunded liability changed from roughly 40 million, or sorry, it's written right underneath, 36 million in 2012 to 100 million right now. So kind of go in the wrong direction. That first question that makes me think of is what's going to happen in the next decade, two decades? And I will answer that for you today. At the bottom of this page, we start to break it down into, well, why? How did it grow from 36 million to 100 million? So the unfunded portion, and you'll see on the next page, that's really what, what drives the contribution. If that unfunded liability was way down to zero, the contribution would be 3 or 4 million a year. So here's a breakdown of what happened. Interest, that's the first part there, 20 million. That just means, you know, on the original 40 million, that's going to grow with interest every year until it's paid off all the way down to zero, just like a mortgage. Payments, well, of course, the county's making payments every year, always makes the, the correct amount, the actuarial amount. That decreased it by 40 million. Assumption changes. So this is, this is my department here. And what's happened here and all over the pension world, I would say, is that things have gotten more expensive. If you think back to 20 years ago, most pension plans in Pennsylvania, elsewhere, thought that they could earn 8% per year on their fund. And they thought they would have to pay all the retirees until they died at age 78, or somewhere around that range. Well, fast forward to 2019, there's been a lot of research in both of those areas and, you know, less fortunate economic realities, but you can't earn 8% anymore. On a forward-looking basis, and Rich will talk more about this when he talks today, but...
Steve Erden.
And people are living much longer than age 78. The life expectancy now is in the mid-80s. Those two things alone make the pensions a lot more expensive. To account for that, we made some assumption changes to keep up with that. We're not going to just let it happen and let the losses build up. So that 29 million in the middle of the, of the page there, that's accounting for those two things mainly. Investment losses, 62 million over that time. This is all just adding up the numbers in our valuation reports, and Rich can shed some more light on that. Other experience, negative 7 million. That's, me as an actuary, I feel good about that because if your other experience, that's non-investment stuff, is coming out pretty close to zero, that means your assumptions are probably pretty close to reality. People are retiring when we think they will. You have the amount of turnover that we think. Salaries are going up on average, what we think. So that's a good sign there, the other experience negative 7. But, so that's how we get to the total of the $64 million growth in the unfunded liability. On the second page, we take that and say, all right, well, yeah, we have this $100 million unfunded liability, but, you know, how does that translate to dollars that go into the budget and have to be put into the pension fund every year? So in order to understand that, you have to understand the cost. And so the, the cost is just really simply, it's comprised of something called normal cost, which is, you know, if a person has 10 years of service and they've earned 10 seventieth of a benefit, that's the benefit formula. And then when they work one more year, now they've gone to 11 seventieth. So there's a cost to that extra year of service. We call that the normal cost. It's only for active employees. If you're retired, if you, if you terminated last year, there's no normal cost. Those are continuing benefit accruals. The cost of that is about 4.9% of pay. There's also a payment towards the unfunded liability. That's where most of it comes from. If you glance at that pie chart down below, you can see two-thirds of it is the, just paying off part of that 100 million. You know, in a perfect world, we would just say, okay, put 100 million in now. It won't be 100% funded. But things don't work like that. So the amortization payment makes up a large portion of the total contribution. If the system were 100% funded, that would be zero. The normal cost would remain. That's, that's always just benefit accruals. So I know one of the questions that was brought up in some of the calls that happened before this meeting were, you know, what if, can we address this problem or solve this problem by changing our benefit system? You know, what if we adopt some kind of savings plan, defined contribution, 401K type thing? Well, what you do there is you're replacing that little blue slice. The blue slice of the pie that says 3.6 million, that's how much is, just went in for 2019. That's how much went into the, to the fund for those benefit accruals. And again, it's about 4.9% of pay. So if you replace that with a similar percent of pay contribution through a defined contribution arrangement, the cost profile will be the same. It doesn't affect the red. That $100 million does not go away because it has nothing to do with accruals. It has to do with, what I said earlier, the fact that kind of benefits just got more expensive. We haven't had, you know, the most favorable experience in the markets. So it's, it's not really a solution to, to the problem of how do we bring the cost down? So I wanted to address that. The estimated 2020 cost is about 14 and a half million. We do a budget estimate every fall. The, the returns are, have been very favorable this year, that Rich will discuss, so that helps. Doesn't help as much as you would think because last year was so bad. So the last part that I want to talk about before, you know, answering all the other questions is, you know, what's the future outlook? Going back to the first thing I said about the first graph, it's going the wrong direction. The unfunded liability is growing, the funded ratio is coming down. Where are we going in the next 20 years? Well, here's the answer. Now, this is, think of it as a weather forecast. It's not going to happen exactly like this. I'm trying to tell you the temperature next April, all right? Just using the best information we have right now. We won't be exactly right, you know, but this is the general trend. In reality, it'll be a little more jagged. But it's good news when you see that that red line does go all the way down to zero by 2037. That's tied to, to the board's amortization policy, which takes the current amount, spreads it over 18 years. It's all paid off. The funding ratio is going to kind of stay around the same for a little while and then eventually increase to 100%. So that's the good news, you know. If, if the contributions are made, which have always been done by the county, if not on time, have always been made in the right amount at some point, the outlook's favorable. So the, 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 the good news is, yes, we're heading in the right direction. The bad news is that 9.8 million right above it, that big chunk, it's going to stay that size for a while, for most of that time. So I don't know if you, would, would you like, Rich, to talk about the, the investment side of things first, or have me answer questions, or whatever?
If anybody has any questions for...
Yes.
On the first page, in the bottom chart.
Yes.
You have interest listed as a contributor, contributing to the growth of the liability.
Yes.
Could you explain that?
When you have, all right, so right now, we have $100 million unfunded liability, and we're contributing 9.8 million to that. Well, the remainder of that is going to grow the next year with more interest. Because what happens is there's a mismatch. The, the assets are here, liability's here. We expect them to both grow at, the assumption is 7%. So if they both grow at 7%, then the gap grows at 7%. That's, that's the interest.
But the interest is what? It's not the interest that's being, that we are earning on the investment?
No, no, no. It's not, it's not, it's not interest that you're earning.
Right. That's what I want you to explain.
Yeah, it's, it's, think of it as, as a mortgage, right? So if you owe $200,000 on a house and you pay $2,000, well, you, you drew down the principal by that, but then more interest got tacked on and, and you didn't pay much towards the principal. Same exact concept here.
So it's interest that we owe into the, into the liability?
Yeah. Another way to look at that, that's a very good question. Another way to look at that is if you paid 100 million now, out of, out of the 100, $100 million liability, there'd be no interest. It's like paying off your whole house at once.
Okay.
Any other questions? We can cut back, but...
Two quick questions, Greg. Now, everything I read right now is about the, the, the amount of time that employees are staying at a particular employer, employment location. The 20-year, the 30-year employees are less likely to be, are less likely to be in the workforce as, as, from what I've been reading. Do you take those numbers into effect when you're coming up with your actuary assumptions? That the people who, say, we've hired in the past five years are less likely to work the full 20 years and therefore not be able to collect a full pension from Luzerne County? Is that taken into account in your actuary assumptions?
Yeah. Well, the short answer is yes. If I could just expand, not, not taking too much time, but we have assumptions on what's the chance of somebody terminating employment in their first year, second year, third year, and it is basically decreasing percentage. You know, once somebody's here 10 or 15 years, the percentage goes down a lot. What's the probability they're going to retire at age 55, age 56, up to, you know, whatever the ultimate age is? And how long they're going to live, what their pay's going to be? So, so yes, we do take into, all those into account with our assumptions. And every five years, we review the actual experience to make sure that the assumptions are reasonable. And to the extent they need to be adjusted, they are. So when we start seeing higher turnover, like you just talked about, we change that assumption.
And Greg, the second question is, okay, we're all in this room. We're hoping to have less of a general fund support of the pension fund. $14.5 million this year, it's a lot. County employees are mandated to put in 5% of their salaries into the pension fund every year. That, that has to go into, that's, that's mandated by the county code. If county employees are mandated to put in more than the 5%, what does that mean for the pension fund? Does that lower the general fund contribution because the county employees are putting more into it? Would you recommend that? Does that increase liabilities? What does that mean for the pension fund? If I say, hey, county employees now have to put 10% of their pension, of their salaries into the pension fund?
Well, first of all, I, I don't have any opinion or recommendation on benefit policy. That's completely outside of the purview of my services. But I can tell you that, you know, it, the county system and all county systems in Pennsylvania are governed by Act 96, which the benefit formula is you get 1 seventieth of your final average pay for every year service, in general. There's, you know, people that have been here for many decades might be slightly different. But so that's the general formula. Plus, whatever you contribute, it accumulates with interest at 4%. When you retire, that gets converted to an annuity. So the more you put in, the higher the, the annuity is. So yes, the county would save if the employees contributed more, but it's not one-for-one. It's more like if the county puts in an extra 1%, the, or sorry, if the employee puts an extra 1%, if all employees do, the county might save a quarter percent. So it's not quite one-to-one. And the reason there's a little bit of savings is because they're being credited 4% while Rich is working to, to try to earn more than that with the fund.
But that obviously would increase our liabilities in the long term because those, those county employees' pensions would be higher.
Yes. It, it would, it would make the, the liability higher. It would make the, ultimately, the, the size of the fund bigger.
Okay.
If I could, Mr.?
Sure.
Yeah, great question, Mr. Peddrill. I want to ask that too. Offhand, how long does it take for an employee to be vested? Is it three years for Luzerne County?
It's, say me if I'm wrong on this, but it's a five-year, it's, it's a five-year pension to be vested into the pension fund. And in order to collect the full pension, you'd have to be 55 with 20 years of service or the age of 60. Is that correct, Rick?
Yes.
Okay.
And I appreciate your, your question too, Dave, because, I mean, there's so many variables to this, and this is why actuarial science is just that, it's a science, and I, you know, I get that too. And really, I think there's broad consensus here that we want to pay our bills, we want to support our employees in the long term. It's, I'll be very clear about that, at least personally for me. However, we're tasked with carving out a path that's good for the taxpayer and also good for the employees. We want to make sure it's solvent, but at the same time, we'll make sure it's fair. And I'm, I'm looking at this and we see a 5% employee match. Well, you know, we're looking at now a 14 and a half percent, which is about 10% of our overall general fund expenditures. So to me, right there, it's, there needs to be some kind of massage in here, some kind of change to make it more, more fair to everybody involved. And I'm, I'm looking here, we just made in, in recent years that, that catch-up payment, that double payment that some of us referred to it. And then we turn around and we still see that our, our graph is going in the wrong direction. And to me, that's very painful as someone who supported that in, in a couple of years ago. So I've, I've got many questions, but I, I know we, we do have a lot of things on the agenda tonight. What are we tasked to do by state and federal mandates as far as funding our pension system? And then what options do we have? I think that covers a lot of questions I have.
Yeah. Well, well, the question, the last question was, was a legal question, so I don't know. Don, you want to?
Yeah, Don, our apologies.
Don, you want to go to the podium there?
Sure. So, so the more obvious one is your contractual obligation because you have contracts with your county employees that require you to contribute. But the less obvious one is that there is in fact a state law that requires it. And it's, it's a state law that governs county pensions. Give you the site. It's 16 PS 11661. And it says when the retirement board, you know, for years, we called it the ARC, the Annual Retirement Contribution. Today, they call it MML, which is the Minimum Municipal Obligation. But when we send that to the county, then it becomes a legal obligation for the county to, to pay that into the fund. And you have to do it by November of each year for the next fiscal year. That's what the statute says.
Could you repeat the site of her?
16 PS 11661. There's actually a case, funny, Luzerne County versus Luzerne County Retirement Board. It's a June 9, 2005 case. So we tested that statute in a, in a different context, but it was cited for the same proposition.
So essentially, what are we doing here? Then basically, I mean, I'm going to be flip, but at the same time. So you're saying whatever the retirement board determines is the appropriate amount, that's what the elective officials have to sign on to?
The appropriate amount is calculated based upon what the unfunded mandate is. So, I mean, there is a calculation. It doesn't get... And to be honest, we, based on past practice, we've agreed on that based upon a certain percentage in that formula. So, I mean, we haven't said this is a take and leave a proposition. We said this is what we need, and in the past, you guys agreed to it.
All right. Again, unfortunately, the graph is going in the wrong direction, therefore, that's when it gets a lot of people's attention.
Yeah. The pension fund is at an all-time high, though. I mean, I'm, I'm with the retirement system for 13 years.
It's so painful because we look back at...
253 million. It, it was below 150 million when it tanked in '08.
So, thanks for that, Don. What I want to ask is, and I, I agree with Mr. Haas, and, you know, when you take a look at the, the numbers and the way the graph is going, it's obviously, we wished for certain things, and again, I wasn't here when you double-funded it, et cetera. But the question I think everyone has, and I'd like to know is, and what, what happens if you do, and this came up before, and I think, what happens if you do underfund it, if you can underfund it? What does that mean to me? Well, what does that mean to the future of the county? I mean, we, we recently got the best credit rating ever here in the county. It had to do with long, tough decisions each and every year. Not one decision that you got lucky on. It was a lot of tough. So the question becomes, in order to continue to move down that path of good financial stability, how would that affect the long-term of the county's financial, the county, the financial impact there?
Besides the impact on your Moody's rating, or, I mean, there's...
Well, I mean, what, what happens if you specifically?
We had, we had an email that came from the PFM. And the email basically said that's one of the items that the financial institutions look at when they do their ratings.
So that's basically, I mean, obviously, and again, we know this when we came on, we, we got away from amortization and different things like that that were, you know, tough decisions that were, were regular practices for the year. And it's just one of these things where, again, I respect looking at all options. That's what we do in the budget time. Just that, you know, sometimes you have to make a decision as to, you know, do you, do you make a bold decision on a short-term solution, or do you look at the long-term and what that impact is? So that's why I was, and I, I didn't see that, so thank you, but that was why I asked that. I'm just following up with Harry. And again, I respect, again, the whole goal here is to look for all opportunities, but it's a decision, a decision everybody here has to make, so.
Mr. McGinnis. They're saying double-funded. Didn't we also miss a payment?
Well, going back many years ago, there was a year where they did not make the payment. That's why when we did the catch-up, that, that got us on track as far as we made that payment. But we lost all that earning power from the point at which they didn't make the payment. And then the county at one time was really paying like this year's pension with next year's money. They were waiting till the following year to pay it. So you lost that earning power also again. So it was a combination of some fine natural decisions there.
So by, by failing to, unfortunately, painful, so to speak, we could be hurting ourselves down the line.
All right. You're going to definitely increase your liability. You know, we know that part of it. Mr. Haas?
Okay. I have really two questions, and I, I don't know if one of them might not be for you, Rich, but, and you've been with the county for 13, 13 years or more. But there was a point in time, and I don't know how many years ago it was, that the county employees were offered an early buyout. And could you just speak briefly about how that might have impacted the funding, this, the unfunded liability?
Rick, I won't steal your thunder.
2008, there was... 2008, there was an early retirement incentive that the retirement system offered. And in the same year, there was a cost of living adjustment. 2008, at that point in time, was one of the most dismal years in the market. So that really put a hampering on what we did. I think a part of that, we spread that over so many years, that, that big part of that red, your graph, I think that's a part of that. So that was the last time we did do an early retirement incentive.
But there was some money that was missing at that point that should have been contributed because some of the employees, I believe, that, that benefited from that early buyout, that early, early retirement were from human service agencies, and some of the pension liability was owed to the county from those agencies, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's a while ago. I, it, there was a part of that that they should have maybe contributed a little bit more.
Right, because they benefited from the pension, from the...
Because the human services were a part of our retirement system, and they were entitled to early retirement incentive.
Right. And so they took advantage of it, but it was never, the money was never recouped by the pension system from those agencies, correct?
No, but I think because the county commissioners contractually agreed to that, so then we were bound by it.
Okay, but it still was a hit on the, on the system.
Everything you just said impacted to the bottom line.
Right.
They were all liabilities.
Okay. And the other question I have is for the actuary. And I have a lot of respect for actuaries. I've worked with actuaries in a number of circumstances over the, the years. However, I have to say, it all rests on you. So all of these, the numbers that we're looking at in terms of what we have to contribute come back to you. So could you just talk briefly, and I don't want you to give very proprietary secrets or anything, but just talk about how you come up with your numbers and how you determine what our, our contribution needs to be?
Okay. There's the two pieces that I talked about earlier, the normal cost and the unfunded liability. They are based on, let me, let me talk about the normal cost first. This will be the blue slice of the pie here. So that's based on spreading the cost of somebody's benefit over the course of their career. So, yeah, we know some people are going to leave in the first few years. We know some people are going to stick around for 20, 25, 30 years. So all that averaged together, we come up with this percentage, and it happens to be right now 4.9% of pay. It doesn't fluctuate a whole lot year to year, so we can count on that being pretty stable. So that's just applied to the payroll. And that's based on, you know, all the assumptions are, we think, you know, there's this much of a chance they're going to leave this year. We think they might retire when they're 59. We think their pay is going to be, you know, this much higher. There's a lot of assumptions going at it. So that's, that's one piece, and that percentage is applied to the payroll. That's the 3.6 million. The employees are also paying a portion which happens to be about the same right now. The other part is we take the asset value of the fund, which as of today, based on the, based on Rich's information here, is 253 million. So let's say we were doing it right now. So we would take the 253 million and we would calculate everybody's benefits. So take, there's basically three different types of people. There's retirees. Basically, we can say, all right, well, they're making, they're, they're being paid $2,000 a month. How much do we need to fund that for the rest of their life? Put all those retirees together, we come up with X million dollars. Then we have the people that have not received a benefit yet but aren't earning anymore. So maybe they worked for that five years or 10 years they invested. They're, they're entitled to $500 a month at some point when they turn 60. So we calculate their liability. It's smaller because it doesn't have to be paid right away. All those lumped together, that gets added to the liability. Then we take every active employee, and not only do we have the cost throughout their career, that 4.9% of pay, but we have everybody at different stages in their career. Somebody who only has one year of service, maybe we determine that, well, we only need $1,000 for them right now, 4.9% of their past pay. But the person that has 15 years of service, maybe we need $80,000 because they've accrued a lot of their benefit already. Put all those numbers together. So when you put all those different pieces together, and it is done on an individual basis, every person in the plan, all 3,000, we come up with a total liability. So that total liability is then compared to the assets. And to the extent it's, there's a shortfall, which there is right now and there has been for a long time, that gets amortized. And so the board decides on an amortization policy, which we discussed at length. And, and, and to, to your question earlier, Mr. Haas, there are, there's, Dave Peddrill's on the board, the treasurer's on the board, council members. So, so it's not, it's not people trying to do, you know...
It's not the Wizard of Oz behind it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not people that are not concerned with the county overall. It's, it's, everybody is... It's, everybody is, and they take a very long time to process this information. But their policy is, you know, how long do we want to spread out this cost to do what's right for the fund, and take all other things into consideration. And that's eighteen years right now. So then it's just a simple calculation, like a mortgage, you know, it's, well, it's a hundred million over eighteen years at seven percent. It's nine point eight million dollars. So that's, that's how we come up with the number for the contribution. And I think, you know, which, one thing we went over briefly earlier, and I'm going to let Rich talk now, but if you look at the first page of my handout, and you compare, you know, you try to just summarize it in one bullet point, where you can say, well, there's a six, the shortfall's increased by sixty-four million because the investment returns have been lower than expected. And this is Rich's area of expertise, and, you know, he can talk about the allocation that the board adopted, and the whole strategy and risk and all that. But, you know, that really answers the question of, why does it seem unmanageable now? Because when you're, honestly, when you're eighty, eighty-five percent funded, people generally don't have problems with the budget, because it's very manageable. That unfunded liability, even though it might be in the millions of dollars, is not breaking the bank. Then when you get down to like, you know, seventy percent range, it's, it becomes a little more of a critical mass. So, Rich, do you want to?
So if I could just, so your method, the method that you use to determine all this is pretty secure, so, and, and I guess what I'm kind of asking is, if we went for a second opinion to another actuary, would we basically get the same results?
You'd get something very close. Yeah. The, we, and we do this all the time. We review other actuaries' work. We review the prior actuaries' work when we change accounts. If you come within a few percent of what they came, we're never going to get the same exact number for the liability, different systems and all that, but if you come within a few percent, that's, you know, expected.
Okay. Thanks.
Richard McGinn.
Sure. Thank you. So the work that my team and I do is not done in a vacuum. Greg articulated the liability, or the promise, if you will, that the county has made to employees and retirees. The decisions that we make from an investment perspective are consistent with those promises. So our job, you know, at some level, yes, is to perform with the markets, but our job at the heart of it is to make good, or to help the county make good on those promises to employees and retirees. So to that end, you know, as Greg had mentioned earlier, the markets have changed, and when a lot of these promises were made, they were made in an environment where the market was returning eight percent, eight and a half percent. And it wasn't uncommon to see that as the assumed miss-out rate of return. The markets have changed considerably since then, and as a result of that, benefits have gotten much more expensive. So right now, actually, over the last couple of years, some of you were on the retirement board at the time. When we were retained as consultant, the actuarial rate of return was seven and a half percent. And for a time, that was a realistic expectation. But as time has passed, in conjunction with Greg, in conjunction with the retirement board, we've established that that seven and a half percent expectation was just not realistic, given the capital markets' hand that we're being dealt. The first step in that process was to lower it a quarter of a point, to seven and a quarter, and now we find ourselves at, at seven percent. And so while I'll, I'll say that, and Greg pointed to the one number, that funded status, I would say that the assumptions that we are using, the assumptions that we have changed in the plan, have been very conservative. And that is a good, sound financial decision in the short term, but it's also a good long-term decision. So if I could direct your attention to support that, on page seventeen, under tab one, we'll begin to look at that expectation. So along the, along the vertical or the Y-axis, you have your annualized return. Along the horizontal or the X-axis, you have your standard deviation or risk. That gray line is our capital markets' expectations over the next seven years. And you'll notice a sixty percent stock, forty percent bond portfolio. We expect that to return about four percent, just north of four percent, over the next seven years. That's a very different environment that we've been in over the last twenty, and it's very different than our longer-term twenty-year expectations. So we get the question, we've gotten the question, actually got the question today at the retirement board meeting, well, what can we do about that? What should we do about that? You'll notice for a second, if you stay on the gray line, that if you move out on that gray line to one hundred percent stocks, and this is U.S. stocks, our expectation is that'll earn you about five percent per year over the next seven years. It'll feel a lot different than it has in the past. We expect volatility to be more normalized, or at least heightened from what we've experienced. So we want to keep a keen eye, so we don't repeat what happened in two thousand and eight. We're not predicting it, but we want to be prepared for that. So our job in its simplest form, in trying to make good on that promise, is that in a year like 2019, we want to perform, we want to participate in an upmarket. In a sideways market, again, which is very similar to what we think we'll experience over the next seven years, we need to earn some modicum of return. We need to get close or as close to that seven percent return objective as possible. But I would say most importantly, that if we do experience a two thousand and eight, again, to use the extreme to make the point, or even more recently in two thousand and eighteen, where the markets, capital markets were down ten percent, we can't be down ten percent. We don't want to be down ten percent. The pension plan on an annual basis is paying out more than we're taking in. On average, it's about four and a half million dollars per year. So the, the punitive nature of a big drawdown, again, in a market that's down ten, it's just so hard to get back to break even. A lot of what we do in managing the pension plan is really winning by not losing. If I could draw your attention, we'll just give you a sense of the, of what the asset, assets look like on, under tab three. And this is on page thirty-two. I'll draw your attention to the upper left-hand corner of the page. As Greg had mentioned, and Donnie has mentioned, performance year-to-date is very strong. First column, we started the year with two hundred and twenty-one point nine million dollars. Despite contributions to the plan, there have been outflows so far this year to, of north of a million dollars. And, Mr. Haas, this is page thirty-two.
Thank you, thank you.
We've made in investment returns thirty-two point nine million dollars. So the funding balance, or the fund balance as of the end of November is two hundred and fifty-three million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Going down lower on the page, that translates to a fourteen point seven nine percent rate of return. That number does not include or incorporate the alternative investments that we use in the portfolio, hedge funds, private equity. In our estimation, the return through the end of November is just, just north of fifteen percent. That compares favorably to the global equity markets, up over twenty-two percent. Bonds are up eight point eight percent for the year. So again, very strong year on a relative basis, very strong year on an absolute basis. But getting back to my comments earlier, to compare and contrast that to, to last year, you could see that in the second column, returns were down about six percent last year. Again, pleased but not happy. Global equity markets were down ten percent last year. So we've held up pretty well, or very well, in a challenging capital markets environment. The fourth quarter, if you recall, was, was challenging. I would characterize December as abysmal. I think the Christmas Eve was the, was the low point in the, in the markets. But, you know, getting back to, or maybe taking a wider lens, we started with the county in October of two thousand and eight, right in the midst of the global financial crisis. We say we, we responded to an RFP. The fund was two hundred and fifteen million dollars. We did a finals presentation. The pension plan was valued at a hundred and eighty-five million dollars. We took over. The pension plan was valued at a hundred and fifty million dollars. So very, very challenging time. It was the position of the board at the time, and that has been consistent in policy, that we could not afford that. Again, Mr. Haas, getting back to your point about the general budget, we want to make sure that we're sensitive to major drawdowns. So we're never put in a position where we have to put more money into the plan to the degree that we had to post-global financial crisis. So we had a hundred and nineteen million dollars. We've made in net investment returns since that time, about a hundred and thirty million dollars. Again, when we find ourselves valued at two hundred and fifty-three million dollars at this point. I'll pause and ask for questions or comments.
Yeah, so, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So a question about when the state guidelines, I'm sorry, Mr. Stone, was it state or federal guidelines you mentioned earlier with, oh, I'm sorry, it was Mr. Kupovich, about the, that governs the, the funding?
That was state law.
It was, it's state law. Was that passed in response to the two thousand and eight crisis?
No.
Or is that going eons back? It's going back a long way. Okay. All right, I've got more to share about the further side.
We changed our investment policies and strategies as a board after the two thousand million collapsed, because we didn't know what we had to invest. So we adjusted the way in which we invest, so we don't see the upside as much.
You minimize the upsides, too. And I think you talked about that last year, Mr. Zer already, came before council.
Exactly. And you could see that...
Seventy-one it was. Thank you.
And, Mr. Haas, on page thirty-nine, if I could draw your attention to the upper right-hand corner, we've achieved that objective. So we measure, we think the best way to measure risk, yes, you could measure it in terms of standard deviation, but it's most appropriate to measure it in drawdowns. So in the upper right-hand graph on page thirty-nine, you'll notice that the maximum drawdown of the markets, since we've been together, peaked to trough, the market was down twenty-one percent, twenty point nine nine percent. The most our portfolio has been down, peaked to trough, has been seven point six percent. The worst twelve-month return, the markets were down twelve point six percent. The pension was down six point nine three percent. Worst three-month return, seventeen point eight nine for the markets versus six point four six for the portfolio. And again, on a one-month basis, market's down nine point seven nine percent. Our worst month together was four point four five percent. So roughly less than half of the volatility, the variability of the markets, but we're capturing much of the upside that, that the market has, has provided us.
Mr. Irvin has a question. Mr. Irvin?
Mr. Irvin?
Yeah. Hey, Rich, I guess I have a, one question. You, you said you're up fifteen percent this year?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yes, he said.
So he's up fifteen percent, so...
That's great.
He, he planned with the actuaries for seven, seven, seven and a quarter, seven and seven and a quarter percent.
Seven percent, I think it's, seven percent.
Yeah, how important, how was, how important is it, is it to put that million and a half in there, if you're up twice as much as you planned for?
Yeah.
And, you know, if, if the market takes a downturn, you're just going to lose that money. So that was, that was my, my first question.
Sure. So a couple of questions, or I'll respond to maybe that question in two ways. Post-two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, if your call was a very good year in the capital markets. My partner, Jeff, and I had come in and presented in front of the retirement board and suggested that over the next seven years, similar to the story that we told tonight, we would experience more muted returns. And those muted returns would be met with higher volatility, at least more normalized volatility. And so if I could draw everyone's attention back to page thirty-two, while we're very pleased with that fifteen percent rate of return in two thousand and nineteen, twenty, two thousand and eighteen gave us a negative six percent. So if I average those two numbers together, fifteen less six is nine, you divide that by two, I'm at four and a half percent. It's almost exactly what we had expected. You know, from a, from an allocator of capitals' perspective, it feels a heck of a lot like running on a treadmill. There's a lot of up, a lot of down, and you sweat a lot in between. And so that is, that is the type of chop that we think we'll experience over the next seven years. And so from our perspective, it's making sure we're not down that ten percent like two thousand and eighteen, avoid those big drawdowns, and participate as much as we possibly can in these markets.
Right.
So it, it's a long-winded way of saying, I, I don't think, and Greg could address this more effectively, even though we're up fifteen percent, and I'm, we're very pleased with that, I, I don't think it impacts that million and a half dollar commitment in any meaningful way.
I mean, if you only planned for seven and, seven, seven and a half to seven, at seven and a quarter, and you made fifteen, it seems like you more than, more than made up that, that one point five million, with, with a fund of two hundred and fifty, you said, maybe?
Two fifty-three.
Two fifty-three?
Yes.
So, yeah, so you, so you made up that, that million and a half already this year. So, I mean, deferring that, what, what, what's that going to cost, that, that million and a half?
So there's two, this is, yeah, this is Greg now. Two things, two, two issues there. Number one, the, the return's always compared to the long-term assumption of seven percent.
Right.
Year by year. And because we know, it's not like a bond coupon, where we're just going to get seven percent, seven percent, seven percent. We know it's going to be fifteen and negative six, two and twelve, and whatever. Because of that, we, we smooth the assets. This is common, almost universal actuarial practice, where if you have a really bad year, negative six percent compared to seven last year is a thirteen percent loss. It's not a six percent loss. It's thirteen, because it's negative six minus the seven. We only recognize one-fifth of that, knowing that there's going to be good years coming. And sure enough, a good year just happened, or at least we hope by the end of this month, it will, it will hold up. But then, whatever just happened this year, we only recognize one-fifth of that. And so we keep building on these one-fifth layers, and it's called smoothing, because it smoothes out your contribution. If we took all of that last year's loss and the, and the negative thirteen percent, that was about a thirty million dollar loss, and just started working that into the contribution, contribution would have gone up by three or four million last year. But we don't do that. It's, it's unreasonable. That's why we have asset smoothing. So that's part of it. The other part is, you know, why, why doesn't the excess return pay for the contribution? It would, except we're still working to get that unfunded liability down to zero. So what it does is, it takes that hundred million down a little bit. But that, that just decreases your amortization payment. So maybe the budget estimate that we, we had based on twelve percent, which was, what, as of September? Yeah, so it was twelve.
So you're, you're saying that, that for the next five years, you're going to be looking for one point five million from the county?
No, I don't think it's going to increase one point five million per year. In fact, I don't think it's even going to...
No, no, a tot, a total of one point five million. If you, if you're, if you're saying it's factored over a five-year period, so you, you're looking for a straight one point five million for the next five years?
It's, might be worse than that, because it's actually going to increase in steps. But each one of those steps is probably going to be less than a million.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's in, it's actually in our valuation report, which I don't have here with me, but it's available on, it's on the county website. There's, there's a long-term projection that's chose each year.
I mean, for, for long-term planning. I mean, just like bond debt or anything else, I mean, we, we should have, have that document for the next five years to show what it's going to be, and not have to wait until, you know, budget time comes up and we'll, we'll get the actuary, we'll get you the number. I mean, if you already know, you know, have an estimate of what that number's going to be, I think, I think it's important that you share that number with us for the next five years.
Yeah, and that's, we're expecting, just based on, this is as of the end of two thousand and eighteen, so it doesn't take into account the fifteen percent. That'll help. But just based on the end of two thousand and eighteen, we're expecting increases of about a million per year, until that two thousand and eighteen, thirty million dollar loss is fully recognized. Now, it changes every year.
Yeah.
We have a fifteen percent year this year. Hopefully, it'll hold up. That's going to just bring that whole thing down a little.
So you'll have a new prediction after the close of this year, basically?
Yes, yeah, we do. We update it twice a year. Once, when we know the return.
Right.
So, so if we're, if we're, if it was December thirty-first right now, I would just take Rich's number and say, okay, we're updating this.
Okay.
And then we have one more, when we collect all the data and find out if there were demographic shifts and all that.
Just to one point, when the retirement board, used to be seven and a half percent was the standard that we were trying to reach, as far as each of those quarter percent, what did that mean in actual dollars as far as contribution to the retirement system?
It's, well, first of all, it's paying more now and less later, but every time that that assumption was decreased by a quarter percent, it was another million dollars toward the contribution. As opposed to not changing it, letting the losses keep coming, and then paying, say, a million and a half or two million, ten years down the road.
But in that effect was, you went from seven and a half to seven and a quarter. That meant another million dollars.
Per year, yep.
But it offset what the future would have been.
Right.
Correct. And if you look at some of the other municipal pension funds, and I've looked at some, and I've read some papers, some of those are still had eight percent as their goal.
Yeah, well, first of all, seven and a half percent, you know, just in the public pension world, that's really fallen out of favor.
Right.
Not to mention that eight percent fell out of favor years ago.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think eight percent's reasonable, just, and I don't, you're the investment expert, but I haven't seen an asset mix that'll get you eight percent.
Yeah. Well, and that, I think, is part of the issue, is that you're comparing some retirement systems that have different goals than what we have put in place here.
Right. And, and somebody had mentioned earlier the bond ratings. They do their own calculation. So if they think you're, if they look at your eight percent assumption, they're going to adjust that and say, no, no, no. You, you really should have this liability that's higher.
Okay.
Mr. McGinn.
Richard, you, you're done with your, Manager Pedri?
We, I just wanted to touch base with...
One more of the questions.
Okay, as soon as Manager Pedri's done, you'll have another opportunity.
I just want to clarify this point, because this is something that we've discussed. It's not something I necessarily oppose, but I want to have the information on this. It's this idea of moving to employees to 401K or the... It's this idea of moving to employees to 401K or the defined contribution plan, as we had talked about numerous times in this place. I wanna be perfectly clear as to what we're at. First off is my, is my question for the solicitor. Ms. Crocamo, a pension is, in every one of our union contracts, the pension is actually referenced. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, it is.
So if we were to move to a 401K, we would first have to negotiate that into every contract.
Correct.
Where I'm at.
Yes.
But if we do move to a 401K, we're now taking the five percent of that employee salary that would go into the pension fund and putting that into a separate account, into their own defined contribution plan. And we talked to Mr. Karpovish today, and he said, the county needs to fund the pension plan by law. So my understanding is that the only way to truly allow a county or municipality to move to a 401K would be to obviously negotiate into everyone, every union contract, which may be a pretty uphill battle on one side of things. But the fund needs to be, the retirement fund needs to be a hundred percent funded in order for us to continue, to continue to pay the pensions that were promised to those employees who have pensions.
Right, yeah. So in my words, I would say that a hundred million doesn't go away. It doesn't, it's not affected whatsoever with any kind of benefit.
Like, we still, we still owe everybody the pension.
Even if you said, we're not gonna pay anybody any pension anymore, nothing. A hundred million's still there.
It's a still a hundred million liability.
It's people who are retired, yeah, it's still there. And that's the hardest thing to deal with, but that's what it is.
Mr. Urban's next, please. Mr. Urban, do you have one more question you said?
Yeah, Timmy.
Go ahead.
I agree with Mr. Petrie in part with the, with the union contracts. I mean, the collective bargaining agreements do have, you know, the defined pension plan in them. However, I don't believe the contracts with the management employees do. And just like the healthcare, when the healthcare was initially put in at ten percent, it was put in with the management employees first. It was gradually negotiated in over years with the collective bargaining agreements. And I think if you're gonna go to a 401K, that, you can do that. You can do that with, with the new hires on the, on the management side right now. I don't think there's anything preventing anybody from doing that.
Say your question, Mr. Urban?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's a question and, and I'll comment on that if anybody has it, so.
Wait, Mr. Haas and then Mr.?
Go on, I'll go for the show. Go with, go with Jill. No, Yuri.
Mr. Carver, you said that you'd have to consider past practice, though. And the, those management employees still have that past practice. Is that not correct? Or would it just not matter?
Yeah, I'm talking about new hires. I'm talking about new hires.
He's talking, Mr. Urban clarifies that he's talking about new hires.
Nonrepresented, non, nonrepresented.
I know about past practice.
So, so, I mean, I think, I think if you're talking about nonrepresented new hires.
Correct.
It's, yeah, I mean, I guess, but that money would not be, they're gonna go into the pension fund, so we have to make up for those contributions somewhere else. In addition, we're talking about an extremely small number of employees in that, in that, in that side of things that were really, I don't know, were pretended from where I'm at. The only way I really truly see, well, anyway, I'll turn it over to Mr. Haas.
Yeah. I think what we're interested in is having a long-term solution. We don't wanna be on the perpetual hook for a hundred million dollars generations from now. I think that's what we're really looking at. And so I think the question is, how do we really go about doing that? If we wanna, we wanna keep the promise, we wanna fund the pension, we know that's not going away. And again, my gist is, okay, that's fine, and I certainly wanna do that. But how do we make it fair to the taxpayers? Because it seems like, what you're telling me, according to the state statute, is the local, the local government will be penalized if they don't meet their obligation. However, per contract, the county employees pay five percent. So that's, that's stationary, that figure is. However, the taxpayers are always on the hook because ours has the potential to go up exponentially. And I think that's what, what the real issue is here, that we're, we don't mind doing that. We don't have money to spend this year. We are, we are trying to our best to really avoid a tax increase, but we're not allowed to do that, according to the state guidelines. At least in this part of the budget, which is ten percent of our expenditures. So when I look back, when we look back at when the, that we were eighty, eighty-some percent funded about six years ago. And then you said, I guess this question is for you, Greg, that the funding, reporting formula changed, and then saying we find ourselves in the low seventies, mid to low seventies. And how did that happen? Why did that happen? And we have no recourse, basically, because they changed that. I think that was, was that the Gatsby board that did that? I thought we talked about this years ago.
Now, the Gatsby didn't change the way that your funded status, you know, from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen. It just changed the way it was reported. Back then, you could defer investment losses. They did away with that in two thousand fourteen, said, you can do that for your contributions the way we just talked about assets. We still do that, it makes sense. But for financial reporting, they said, forget about that. Just tell us the dollars you have in the fund. That's the only dollars you can use. But how it changed, you know, how it went from here to here is what's on that bottom graph there. And essentially, you know, the, the, the return over that, over the last ten years in Rich's report was six percent. Well, we were assuming seven and a quarter or seven and a half. So, you know, one percent doesn't seem like a lot, but one percent of two-hundred million is two million dollars. And you do that year after year, that builds up.
It's like an interest account.
And there's decisions made by the board that they wanted to protect themselves from that downside risk. So, you know, it's, and to answer your question about, you know, what, what should we do? I think, you know, from my point of view, it's, you know, you wanna do certain things like make sure the board meets regularly. They do that. Make sure the board works with their solicitor, investment consultant, actuary, they do that. Make sure they have a written funding policy, they have that. Make sure they amortize the unfunded liability over a reasonable amount of time. They, lengthy discussion about that last year, that's, that's in place. And make sure we review those assumptions on a regular basis to make sure they're reasonable. We do that. So, so I think we're doing all the right things, and I understand the frustration with everybody and even myself, you know, on behalf of all my clients. But it's, it's, it's just a long, long-term process.
Yeah, it is long-term, and I think the public just keeps on seeing this grow and grow every year. And, and you said you don't have the amortization schedule there in front of you, but it looks like it's gonna go up again another about a million dollars next year and a million dollars after that. And I'm, I just see here with the, on your page two of your summary, you know, we're not looking at, to see a real, a real downslope until twenty, twenty-twenty-four. It's another five years out, and that's even with making these increased payments. I think just like when people pour into the retirement, they, they put more in as they get closer to the end of the retirement because they have more disposable income to do that, obviously, it's gonna be at a lesser rate of return. But nonetheless, they have it to invest at that time. And I think this, that's what really upsets me about this process, is that we don't have it now. In ten years, we will certainly have a lot more to put in, and why can't that be an option? And forgive me for talking so much here, but really, why can't that be an option? Secondly, when we made the double payment to a couple of years ago, you know, we didn't receive, obviously, we didn't receive a penalty, we didn't receive an accolade. That was a surplus that I think was wise for the long term. But now we come here, a couple of years out, and now we're asking the taxpayers for more when we could have maybe smoothed that out and made an increased payment then to avoid more of a hit this year and the next five years coming down. And forgive me, I asked like three questions at once and had some comments thrown in there, but.
I was gonna point that out.
Yeah, so take it however you'd like to.
So if you do a present value calculation, and I wanna get back to, maybe tie a comment from Mr. Urban to Mr. Haas, your, your point. Let's just assume for a second that number's a million and a half dollars. By not putting that million and a half dollars in the plan for, let's just say, ten years, Greg's assuming that, number one, it's in the plan.
Yeah, I get that.
And number two, we're earning seven percent on that. So that million and a half dollars, ten years from now, again, back of the envelope will cost you about three million dollars. So you've, you haven't addressed the problem, you've maybe kicked it down the road a little bit, and it's gotten, it's gotten, it's gotten worse. The other thing, you know, we keep calling it a double payment, which I guess it was in one year, but we, we missed a year. So it was sort of a catch-up.
A catch-up payment.
And that, I think, contributes to the, the investment experience. So that, let's call it ten million dollars to make the math easy. Greg had assumed that that was in the plan, earning seven and a half million dollars each and every year until it was in fact put into the plan. Then we caught up. So yes, it was a double payment. Yes, it was the right thing to do. It was a prudent decision to make. But there was that gap in time that we didn't have it in the portfolio, happened to coincide with the bull market. So we could have maybe caught up a little bit more. But I think that's what it's about, making these payments on time. Again, and letting them grow at the rate that we expect them to, to grow.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Other questions? Do you have any other comments or information?
No, Timmy, just a comment that, you know.
Okay.
I think the, the, the big light in the county should be around twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, when the bonds are paid off and you'll have an extra twenty million dollars a year, providers that spending doesn't go up twenty million dollars over the next, next ten years, so.
Okay. Mr. Vancik is a member of the retirement board, and he wanted to have a chance to speak at this time.
My name's Johnny Vancik. I'm a Luzerne County employee. I'm here to speak briefly about the Luzerne County retirement system. We've already heard from our actuary and Mr. Hazori. Luzerne County retirement system, as per state law, provides a pension for those employees who qualify. It is a benefit of county employment. Luzerne County Retirement Board consists of five members. The members are, number one, a member of the retirement system elected to represent current retired employees. I am that member. The county manager, Mr. Petrie. The budget and finance director, Mr. Swets. The chairperson of council or his designee, currently, Mr. Perry. Another council member designated by council. That seat is currently vacant due to the resignation of Jean Keller. Each board member has a legal fiduciary responsibility to the fund. As was said, the retirement system is funded in three ways. Employee contributions, five percent is mandatory, and up to an additional ten percent is voluntary. Some employees do take advantage of that. Investment earnings, and the third is the country contribution as determined by the actuary. I believe the board has consistently worked to maximize investment earnings and reasonably cut or limit costs when possible to reduce the county's pension obligation. Two examples, the board, we constantly get requests reviewed but did not approve. Member requested cost of living increases, and member requested retirement incentives or an early buyout. While I am not an actuary or investment professional, I compare the county's pension obligation to a payment due on a credit card or, or other bill, and to not adequately fund the retirement system, now would cost much more later. In closing, retirement board meetings are open, publicly advertised meetings. As always, the public and any member of council can attend, and I wish more people would, and encourage people to attend, find out what's going on, and give us some input. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments, questions, information?
Chip, just one question about the million, million and a half.
Go ahead.
What percentage of that is funded by the agencies and what percentage is funded by the county? It appears that all of it's gonna be funded by the county, and I'd like to get a breakdown of that. And the second one is, have we gone back and, you know, the airport hasn't paid their share for a long time? Maybe we oughta start looking at that. My understanding that the people at the airport are in both retirement systems. They're in, they're in Luzerne County system and they're in the Lackawann County system. I'd like the actuary to look at that to see if that's, that's actually appropriate. Are they collecting full pensions from both counties when they retire?
Anything else, Mr. Urban?
No, that's it, Timmy, thanks.
Okay. The first question was.
What portion does, does the county pay versus the agencies? Isn't it seventy percent of the total?
It's, I'd have to look at the spreadsheet.
Isn't it, I thought the county portion was roughly seventy percent of the total.
Yeah. Brian, I did.
Oh, okay.
It's currently about almost eighty percent. I think it's seventy-eight and a half percent. And obviously, it's based on who's currently employed. So what we do, just as what Mr. Hummer or Mr. Actuary, Mr. Stump, I'm sorry, couldn't think of his name, Mr. Stump. But it's much simpler. So we do the simple math. So we sit there and say, okay, the county needs fourteen-point-five million dollars. We have fifteen-hundred employees and we divide it out. And we put the increase based on what, where somebody works. So somebody who works in the general fund, it goes in the general fund pot. If it works, it goes to the agency, it goes in the agency pot. So the increase in the general fund is because there was a portion, if you remember during the audit, that the courts don't pay us until later. So I believe its probation pays their share, we front the money. So that's why, so we weren't short in the audit, because we had been short in the audit in the past. We actually front the money, and then we get it through expense reimbursement from the courts. That was a change about two years ago. So it is going up by the full amount, but it's not really, it's going up by like eighty percent. And then it was a correction that we're fronting the money for the courts, which we then get later as expense reimbursement.
But the payment we made last year into the budget, two thousand nineteen budget, was how much from the general fund, roughly?
It was, it was about, a little bit, a little bit higher than that. I have the budget book, it's a little bit higher than that.
Okay.
It's probably closer to nine.
And now the, the payment out of the two thousand twenty general budget is nine-point-five, right?
Right. So the, the increase, it's not one-to-one. I think the point, as they said, the total is fourteen-point-five million.
Right.
So the general fund portion has consistently been over budget. So we're budgeting, every year we budget a little bit more based on the allocation of who's in the general fund.
Okay.
So I understand what he's saying. It does look like it's all being picked up by the general fund, but it's not. It's basically, here's what we have, fourteen-point-five million, about seventy-some percent, and that's how we get to the ten million.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So last year's number was nine, last year's budgeted number was nine-point-three-five million.
Right.
From the general fund.
Yes.
And then the rest of that was, was from the agencies, correct?
Correct, correct.
To the, to get us up to where we're at.
Yes, because it would have been the thirteen-million-dollar total, so we would have budgeted nine-point-three of the thirteen million last year.
Right, so it's about a third.
Yeah, it might be closer to, I think maybe Mr. Stump was right, maybe it's closer to seventy percent than eighty percent.
Well, ours is seventy percent. I mean, theirs is about, yeah. I'm looking at the other, from the other side.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think just my last question, Mr. Chair, if I can.
Your last question?
Hey, we're just getting started here, but for this, for this second, you know me.
You're right about that, Mr. Haas.
You know me, Mr. Chairman. So what I wanna say is, long-term solution, what can we do here, really? That's, that's what we're here for.
I think what you see with a long-term solution is that one in a graph that shows where our liability is.
Correct, but I don't wanna see my great-great-grandchildren here dealing with pension liabilities, too. You know, obviously, this one.
Two thousand thirty-seven, supposedly it'll be zero.
Can I also add to that? I mean, I got, I think Dave brings up that, that option to go to defined contribution, but that's gonna be very problematic because we just discussed it. But what other recourse do we have as a county government? As all governments across the country are dealing with this situation. We're not, we're not unique. We're unique in other areas, but not this one. That's my, my point.
You gotta change the laws on the state, Harry, you know?
Cheers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Thanks for the information. I think it made it as, well, as simple as possible, which was really great, because I think hopefully everybody understands a little bit more.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, we're going down to item number two, which is the division reports. I would ask that Mr. Petrie keep it as reasonable as possible because we have, like Mr. Haas said, we have a long night ahead of us.
I'm open for questions. If there's anybody's any questions now, email me, and we'll get better.
Any questions in regards to the division reports from Mr. Petrie? Anyone? Okay, then we're going down to the budget work. Mr. Swets?
Sharon, could you reflect in the minutes that I stopped talking in thirty seconds?
No minutes for work sessions.
Could we add that to some sort of minutes?
We have the last division before budget amendments, intergovernmental.
Intergovernmental.
Let me grab the sheet here. So you have the sheets, which was broken down by the intergovernmental appropriations. There's really three things in there. There's the top line, which has LCC and Penn State Extension. As documented, there's a sixty-two-thousand-dollar increase, or one percent in the manager's budget in that line. In the next section, which is Mountain Council of Governments and Conservation District, there's a five-thousand-dollar. there's a $5,000 increase that was requested by the Conservation District. And when looking at the next section, which had the Law Library, the Transit Authority, we left it the same. And when I went back and looked at the actual resolutions, I realized that we had mentioned before that each year that needs to be changed by 5%. So there's actually going to be an increase to LCTA and Hazleton Transit. Not, they're not here until 2020. They won't physically come in and ask for it. But because where we are, we have to increase 5% so they get their full federal and state match. So that's the changes. I will, I have the number here. Give me one second. It should be from 1713073 to 1762225. So we need to increase 49,152. And the other two things again that were changed were the 62,000 and the 5,000 in those other two lines. And that is if for intergovernmental.
Questions for Mr. Swets? Those were requested, right?
Correct.
The College, the Conservation District.
Correct.
Those are requested.
Those are requested. We get, we get letters that come into us or calls or emails that go into the manager. Yes, those are requested. So they are in the manager's budget. That was a request.
Okay. And the match for the LCTA, the Hazleton Transit is in order to get the full state...
That's to get the full funding. I realized that when I was looking at that, that that needs to be changed. So, well, we can put together an amendment for council to vote on.
Timmy, a question?
Yes, Mr. Urban and Ms. Hou, go ahead.
Yeah, number one, the Hazleton Transit, has any resolution been made with Carbon County or Skookil County? Has anybody reached out to them again and asked for a portion of their payment? And secondly, has anybody reached out to Hazleton City and asked the city to pay for their own transit authority? It is their authority that they set up, and I don't believe we pay for any other authority. We don't pay the Housing, Works for Housing Authority, we don't pay Works for Transit Authority, we don't pay anything other than Luzerne County. I mean, this is an agency set up by Hazleton. The other one was the Community College. I mean, someone came in there, oh, several months ago and said that the Community College has a large reserve fund. So if they have a large reserve fund, why aren't they drawing down on their reserves and instead of coming and asking us for more money? They can factor in some of their reserve funds into their budget. Has anybody gone back to the LCCC and asked them that question? And I'd like, hopefully, they could do that if they haven't between now and next week.
I can answer the first part.
Go ahead.
So for LCTA and for Hazleton Transit, we budget the max. I do remember having that conversation before. I have not talked to Mr. Sharp. They will not be here till May or June. That's normal when they come in. We're budgeting the max amount that those agencies will need for, to get their reimbursement. I agree, if they get it from another county, and I realize it was brought up last year, that's great. We're budgeting the max. If we budget the max and they actually need less, we could transfer it to reserve during the year. So we're just budgeting the max. But I haven't talked to Mr. Sharp personally.
How long have we been funding that?
A long time.
A long time. This has been coming up before when I was on council before. Why is this coming up again? I mean, we voted on this many times. They come...
Every year.
Every year. I mean, I just don't understand what happened in the middle. Talked about it, you're going to approach it. I mean, I think you voted on it many times too, Mr. Urban. So even probably going back to the commissioner's side, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm just wondering...
First, yeah, Ricky, when you're done, I would just comment.
Yeah, go ahead. I think you understand.
We also, we also used to fund for lifeguards in a pool in Cunningham Township, which we don't do anymore. I mean, again, this is a Hazleton authority. Hazleton needs to start putting these things in their budget or else reaching out to Skookil County and Carbon County for the funds, not to us. I mean, we're not in a position to give money away anymore. We don't have it. We're borrowing money. We just borrowed, what, 20, 20 some million dollars for radios and voting machines. I mean, so we don't have it. I mean, it's about time somebody starts paying their own bills. So I'm going to keep on asking the questions while I'm on council. And when I'm not on council, I'm going to keep on coming in and asking too. Maybe I'll go down to Hazleton meeting and ask them in person why they're not funding their own authority.
Well, I understand and respect that. And I certainly understand, I think it's a valid point, bringing other counties in that they support, which is Skookil County and Carbon County, and we've had that discussion. But again, I mean, we have voted on it. I voted on it. I believe you voted on it. Others have voted on it. And, you know, if it's one thing that it's time to say, make a change, that's certainly respectable. But, you know, I just want to make the point, this has been going on for many years, so.
Yeah, and if it's not included in our budget, I think it'll send them a clear message that, you know, you got to do something and come up with the money.
Ms. Hou, do you have a question?
Yes, the difference between what was in the 2019 budget and the 2020 proposed budget seems to be the difference of 62,000 that was requested by LCC. And I'm really not sure what the rationale for that was. I just can't recall it right now. Do you know what it was?
Yeah.
LCC contacted me, their president, Tom Leary, this is prior to his raise.
That was my next point.
So he contacted me and requested an increase in the proposed budget to a 3% increase to LCC. I would say that he has made these requests to me in my past, in past budgets as well. We are not able to support them. In this particular budget, we were able to, I said we would be able to request a 1% increase as opposed to the 3% increase that LCC does. I do believe that LCC is a great asset to the community. Not only does it educate so many people in Luzerne County, employs a large number of Luzerne County residents as well. And, you know, according to Mr. Leary, he believes that a 1% increase from a county funding would mean he could potentially get more from the state funding as well, so he could move on from there. That was my last conversation with, I had with him prior to the submission of the budget in early October. I've asked him for the 1% to county council. After the budget was submitted, came the news about his compensation that, you know, and that's where we are at this point.
Great. So LCC is a wonderful institution, and I think we all support it. And we have supported it financially. We have a bond, you know, some, all of our bonds are not solely for Luzerne County purposes. There's one that we share with LCC and we do provide support there. But, I mean, that's my point. He's asked for an increase and you've allocated a $62,000 increase, but 16, he just got a $16,000 a year raise. So out of that, if you take that out, you're looking at, the college might get 46,000 out of that. So are you still standing by that as a valid proposal?
I've proposed my budget to county council. I feel funny to now pull off, just to say, to say where I'm at. I would say that LCC has requested a 1% increase, asked for a 3% increase, I support the 1%. It's up to county council if they say at this point that this would be the right time to do that or in future budgets in order to assist LCC moving forward from there. And, you know, obviously, the timing of the whole situation kind of threw me off personally.
Do you know when the last time we increased?
I think it was a couple decades ago.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm not aware of anything under our home reform of government that came into play. And I believe the last allocation sometime in early 2000s, I want to say, but I'm not 100% clear on that. Definitely not since 2012.
But the allocation is still over $6 million.
$6 million of Luzerne County funding goes to support LCC every year.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, maybe it'd help the conversation too. I think the tuition rate was increased by the board, by the LCC board, a couple years. Can I speak to that? I don't know if anybody knows how much that went up by. I thought I remember reading about that or discussing that.
There definitely was an increase.
I know, it was with the credit.
I don't know what the percentage or dollar amount was, but there's definitely...
In recent history, like two or three years ago or so?
Maybe a little sooner than that.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions on intergovernmental?
In terms of LCC, see, I was concerned about, I mean, I serve on the board. I think it's a wonderful organization. I was concerned about Leary's raise, President Leary's raise. And when I saw your amount in here, 62,000, like, are we paying for his raise? And then the issue also is, they have a lot of money in their foundation, which is part of the college but runs by a separate board. And there's, and of course, it's used in many ways that, for scholarships and everything. But there's a lot of money there. I mean, we've had the actuaries come in and the people from Morgan Stanley, I believe, come in there too. There's quite an amount in the millions.
In the foundation?
In the foundation.
Listen, I would say this. I've now submitted, this is the fourth budget I submitted to county council. I kind of wish this increase came in prior to this increase from where I'm at. But at the time, Mr. Leary, I do believe in LCC, I believe in their vision, and I asked council to review that. At the time, I was not aware of any sort of raise or anything along those lines. And it's up to county council for your decision at this point.
Any other questions? Okay. Now we're going to get into some proposed budget amendments. We have several that have been submitted. If everybody has a packet in front of them. The first one, I believe this was Hou's admissions. Would you like to go through those, please? Hou?
Okay, sure. So the first one is Division 10, General Government, and that's the county council. And I believe there was an error that was mentioned when we went through this, that the life insurance benefit was supposed to be listed at $160 and it was listed at $1,160. Is that correct?
Mr. Suss.
Yep. So I recommend that reduction. And then the other one was that I recommended reduction of miscellaneous expenses from 1,500 to 500, because we didn't use any of them, any of it. So is there a reason why that's there? I don't know.
It's been there for probably six or eight budgets. The one thing I would say along those lines is we have to do something with the codification. And I've asked to get a preliminary figure of what we spent the last time. And then, so we may have to have some monies in the council's budget to do that project.
Okay, well, but we also have a line of office supplies there for $3,000 that's been there for a while too. And so far this year, we've used $80.
Yeah, I think you're going to find it will be more towards the end, but it will not match the 3,000 for sure.
Right.
But I think at one point, I don't know, I think somebody mentioned like $17,000 for codification.
Yes, and we're going to look to see, to digitize it as well.
So as soon as we get an estimate that seems to be reasonable, we'll bring that forward to the council. Okay?
Well, that won't be before next week.
I hope it will. Yeah, I hope we have it before next week.
Okay. Just on the office supplies?
Sure.
On the office supplies, I have not ordered any office supplies for quite some time, because when I came into the office, it was over really, really well stocked with supplies. But now I am down to bare bones, so I will be placing orders where I haven't in the past. And the other thing I do want to mention is, the proclamation folders are, they have not been ordered either and they do run about $1,000.
Well, I didn't propose a change to office supplies.
No, 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 but I'm just saying that there are some expenses in there that you won't see every year, but then when they do come, they're big.
Right. I didn't propose a change to that though. I proposed a change to the life insurance to correct what was probably a typo and then a change to the miscellaneous expenses. How do you want to do this, Mr. McInnes? Do you want...
Well, I, we're just in, we're in a budget work session. If somebody would, wants to add this to the agenda when we get to the voting session, we may. You know, the person can add that. But, I mean, I'm looking around the table here and everybody sees it be okay. So if they want to add it, I wish somebody would...
And I had that question for the process. So is that how we're going to do it? I mean, obviously, there's going to be a lot of changes. When we get to the voting, we'll make a motion and go through any kind of amendments. And that'll be added or changed to the budget that we'll be voting on.
Well, what it will do is we'll allow the budget and finance people to get started on getting a budget with some of the amendments in place, which will make it hopefully a little bit simpler next week. But it's not necessary. If there's a lot of discussion and a lot of question, we don't have to add that, particularly that amendment, until next week if somebody wants to add it.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Yeah, is that all right?
Can I go on then?
Sure.
All right, so the next one is Division 20, Budget and Finance and Under Administration. I propose removing $135,000 from other contractual services and eliminating the outsourcing of the payroll, bringing it back in-house, because we did payroll in this county for 200 years. And we did not realize any savings from the ADP payroll contract, which was, you know, upfront by the administration when that was proposed. But, you know, I think before you raise taxes, you want to make sure that you're not wasting money. So if you're having budgetary problems at your house, you don't hire a maid to come and clean it. You clean it yourself maybe. So that's my proposal on that. And it was $130,000 for the contract. And then there was also a $20,000 line for updates for ADP, for Kronos and for New World, I think. And I just took $5,000 from that $20,000 line and put it together with this. So it was $135,000 that I've been proposing to reduce that line by. Division 30, Administrative Services for Information Technology. I propose reducing the wages for nonrepresented by $50,000 so that we would add only one position, not two. I do think, and I have thought since 2012, that information technology, our IT department is, they're the unsung heroes of the county in many ways. For a long time, we had one guy doing IT. And I think it's great that there's more staff, but I don't think, I think that they would benefit from the addition of at least one position. So I would like to add only one position, not two, which would reduce the wage line by 50,000. There would also be some savings in the payroll liabilities lines, which I did not put in there. But then, 550, 25, other communication expenses. If you only add one employee, you can also reduce the reimbursement for a telephone by $480 there. And then I did not find in my notes an explanation for the increase under repairs and maintenance miscellaneous. So I propose reducing it back to the previous year, reducing it by $25,000. Do you have an explanation for what that increase was? I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Parsnick and Mr. Morrow tomorrow.
I just didn't have it in my notes.
$25,000 is not an increase this year. That was actually in the 2018 budget. However, council had voted to accelerate that into the 2018, to use 2018 reserve funds.
That was a prepayment from 2018.
That was a prepayment in 2018 for 2019 expense. And that's why the 2019 figure was $25,000 less on books.
Okay. So that's money that you're using right now. Right now, you're costing 69, 69,2. Okay, I just didn't have an explanation of that. All right. Okay, thanks. That's all that's in there.
Thank you.
Then Division 50, Operations for Planning and Zoning. We had a discussion in the work session and it was that we could reduce that line by $101,000 from $436,000 to $335,000.
That's on Mr. Eddie here. Is that the right number? Heath?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Heath.
So that was from the work session discussion. And then Department 4174, Buildings and Grounds, not, by not adding the additional custodian and redirecting the existing staff to clean the records retention facility, we can reduce the wages by $29,010. And that is the total, including benefits. I took that from the position budget list. Okay. Then Judicial Services and Records, Division 60. This was also in the discussion in the work session. If you remember, I asked the coroner why there was a discrepancy in the wages from the position list. And they said that the correct number should have been 141,5. So that's why that's there.
Ms. Holgarth, is that the right number, 141,5?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, and then Record Storage, Repair and Maintenance of Buildings, to reduce by $10,000 to eliminate the outsourced cleaning contract and direct existing personnel to add that to their tasks.
Can I address this one?
Sure.
On that one, Ms. Hou?
I'm not the chair. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. On that one, Ms. Hou, we discussed this at a session and you said that, why aren't we doing this in-house? Why don't we have the custodian to do this? And then, so that's the reason why I added the custodian position based upon your recommendation. And now you want to get rid of the new custodian position and you want to get rid of the contract as well?
Well, I don't want to get rid of a new custodian position. I don't want to add a new custodian position. And I believe Mr. Schnee favored adding a position as well. But the question was, why are we not doing... But the question was, why are we not doing it in-house? The question was not, why don't we add a position to do it? And so, you know, the question is still, why aren't we doing it in-house with the people that we already have?
We don't have the staff to do that in addition to the space, the location of that low, of the records retention area. In addition, I think this contract was only $6,000. Was that correct, Ms. Holgarth?
$6,250.
$6,250, not $10,000.
Okay. All right. Division 95, Debt Service, and this was the question that I had because of the...
Mr. Swetz, do you want to come up to the podium here?
Right. The papers that we got on October 4th, and I know PFM sent a reply today, and there was, there were some emails that came in about this. And so I believe the difference here is probably because of the TRAM, right?
Correct. So...
So what could we reduce it by then?
It's the 24375338 is all the fixed costs, not by the TRAM, and the TRAM that council will be voting on later is 164077. So I believe it's 637547, it could be.
637...
637547, but I'll double check that.
547.
Yeah.
So if that's the correct number, then that would be my proposed amendment. Okay? I went from the numbers that we were given to the numbers that you entered. Okay.
What did you say the number was?
637547, instead of 801624. And that's a difference of $164,077. Then Division 99, the Reserve Fund, I propose reducing the amount that would be allocated for the Reserve Fund by $300,000 from $500,000 to $200,000. And again, this is not taking money out of the bank. This is just looking at the revenues that come in, in 2020, and where we're spending it, where we're allocating, and not allocating $300,000 there. It doesn't mean that we're taking any money out of any fund. It just means that we would put $300,000 less into the reserve. So it's all dealing in one year's money. It would not affect the $400,000 that would remain in the reserve from this year, hopefully at the end of, the end of this month. Then the other amendments I have, oh, this is the, this was not the revised one. So the revised one, well, this is the only difference then.
The revised one's next.
Yeah, I know, but I said just use the revised one. Well, that's okay. So then it takes us back to, just look at the second page. It takes us back to, if you go back and look at the Solicitor, Division 16, if you can get rid of the first page altogether. Division 16, the Solicitor, Department 4151.
Yep.
To reduce Other Contractual Services, line 550.15, reduce it by 60,000 from $90,000 to $30,000, to eliminate the lobbyist contract, the Maverick lobbyist contract. And then the final thing on the back of that page is Other Amendments, to reduce the merit increases by 50%. So it would be, it would reduce them by $55,725, which would still leave $55,725 for those, and for the elected offices, which would be the Controller, the DA, and the courts, to reduce their merit increases also by 50%, which would also eliminate $62,653, still leaving 1% available for merit increases. But the issue was that last year, we approved an amount of 2% for merit increases, and the merit increases were not, were provided, but they were not capped. We had no cap on them, because we're not a salary board. But some people got more than 2%, and some people got less than 2% or nothing. And so if that's the way it's going to be done, I don't believe we need to allocate the full 2% amount. So that would reduce, in terms of merit increases across the board, it would reduce the budget by $118,378. So the total that I have proposed there is $1,634,492, but then you have to subtract the 164077. So it's like 1,000, 1,480 something.
Mr. Suss.
Yes. My question is about the 1%. Is it, Linda, are you saying that it's still going to be, like, some people could get...
Well, it's up to the manager to give out, to give the raises out. It's up to the manager. So last year, we allocated, we had in a set amount of 2%. Some people got nothing, and some people got three, or maybe more. I don't, I don't know.
No, three. Three is the amount.
Yeah. But the point was, when I voted on the, on the budget, I, my understanding, and apparently was flawed, was that the maximum anybody would get would be 2%. So, you know, it's within the manager's right to give out raises, but I don't think we have to have an open purse.
Okay. So, so the maximum is at 1%?
Well, that, that would be the total amount that would be available.
Okay. All right.
So if he chooses to allocate nothing to, you know, 50 people, and give, you know, the total amount to one other person, that would be up to him, too. But I don't think it's necessarily going to foster happiness in the ranks.
Yeah, actually, a question for Mr. Pedren. It's response regards to, I just had it. Bear with me.
1270.
Sorry. The Division 16, the lobbyist. Ken, you give an update on that. I wasn't here when we voted. I know there was some conflict. Can you fill us in as to the value of that, what took place this year?
Sure. This council allocated $60,000 to, for Maverick Strategies. It's $5,000 per month of what they utilize. I'm in contact with them at least once a week regarding grants and other opportunities that the county has, has worked forward with. The contract that we currently have runs until June 30th of 2020 as well. So this council approved a contract that runs from them, from, up until June 30th of 2020. And I want to be perfectly clear with everybody in this room, as I've said in the past, we got over a mil, we got a million dollars for the Now on One project, based upon the hard work of these individuals. These individuals in this lobbyist group came forward during our Now on One project, worked with our state legislators, worked with our state senators, and able to come up with that million dollars that has kind of taken off the top, off of the Luzerne County taxpayers. That's money that we did not have to borrow, based upon their hard work. I truly believe a $60,000, $60,000 fee is worth a million dollars in a phenomenal return on that investment. I do think that this needs to be reviewed every year, to see if this is something we want to, we want to maintain, we want to, we want to upkeep. I do want to hold these individuals to the fire and make sure that we are continually working with them, and we are continuing to work with them, because we're about to submit a second LSA request for about 200-some thousand dollars, actually 500-some thousand dollars for, for the Campbell's Ledge project, that we were encouraged to do so by our lobbyists. So far, they've been great to work with, and $60,000 for a million bucks is a pretty good return on investment from where we're at. I do think we have to take a look at it, but I do think that this was a good opportunity for the county, and something, and a risk that paid off for us.
Dave, are you safe to say that without Maverick, we don't get this?
Without Maverick, I, I don't even know this money exists without Maverick Strategies. They came together for us with this million dollars. They, they worked with us. They sat down with the budget office. They sat down with our state legislators, and they worked with every single, every single state legislator in Luzerne County to get us this funding. Not something that we could have done in-house in order to pull this across.
Dave, Craig, I just, I just can't let this pass. This is all of, you said they worked with all of our local legislators?
Correct. Every Luzerne County legislator.
Okay. So isn't that the job of our legislators, to look out for us?
Absolutely. But this is the coronation that we needed in order for us to move, move us forward. That, this particular project was the, was the, the branch out of Maverick Strategies, working with the state legislators in order to get that particular funding. It came to us from the, from that amount.
Right.
Listen, I won't, I won't be the first to say the state legislators did a phenomenal job for us, and I don't want to get into who did what or anything along those lines. Let's be clear, but Maverick Strategies played a key role in getting us a million-dollar grant this year in 2019. And we currently have a contract with them until June of, June of 2020. I highly recommend the county, county council does not remove funding for this contract.
And there's, there's no way we can, we can say to Maverick Strategies before June, "Thanks very much, but it's, it's time to move on." In other words, we have a contract.
We have, well, we have a contract with until June 30th.
Okay.
We have a contract with until June 30th, that this council approved. After that contract's over, you know, we could obviously move on, and I, I think we should look at these contracts every year to matter. If they're not, if they're not carrying the weight, I don't think that we should continue to work with them. They are independent contractor, like we handle other independent contractors. If they're not doing the job, then we move on. In this particular case, this one did.
I guess what really bothers me is there, there are, well, I, it's wonderful that they were able to do whatever they were able to do. I'm very grateful for the money. But, I mean, these are local legislators who should be looking out for us naturally. We shouldn't need a lobbying firm to talk to our local legislators for us. I guess that's the point.
But, and I, I hear you, but I think fairness is, you know, they're stretched all over the place. They're looking, everybody's looking for money, and just like us, it's every other municipality, and, you know, everybody has so much time in the day. And so I think the point here is, is that you have somebody who's focused specifically on Luzerne County, and it's an investment. I mean, just like the investments we talked about before, you know, you might lose it, might win. And so this year, we won. We might lose later down the road, but I think that's what, and that's why I asked the question. We have to decide, is it a good investment moving forward?
Other, other counties municipalities have, have lobbyists. Well, it is a highly competitive environment in order for us to do these things. The LSA money last year that we did not have the lobbyists for, we put in for a million dollars for the, for the Now on One tower site on the, the back mountain tower site. I thought it was an absolute slam dunk. I worked with legislators. Fred Rosenkrantz and I and our team met with everybody. We, we felt really good about it. We got $330,000. $330,000 is great. A million dollars is much more from where we're at. And we're, we're very thankful for, for all of the work of our state legislators that have worked on this matter as well.
Mr. Parsnick?
Yeah, yeah. I agree with what Jane brought up, too. I just think, and Bravo, hats off to Maverick, hats off to Luzerne County, we got a million dollars. But, boy, oh, boy, the, the undercurrent out there in the public, they are very upset, because people are, it just comes across as, we have to pay extra just to get the job done. And I get it, we netted $940,000 off that. We pay, we had a 6% finder's fee. And, I mean, I think this platform, I think we could, we could use this to speak en masse to our legislators, to our legislators, to the whole delegation, that some of our legislators cut our magistrate reimbursement a couple of years ago, two, quarter of a million dollars. And if we can't work together, the governments, how are we really meeting the public's need? So, again, we, we have a legislative committee. I, I was very disappointed, to say the least, that a lot of legislators didn't show up, and some didn't even send proxies. So, again, we're on the same side, but it comes time to budget season, yeah, there's some kudos to throw around here, but I think overall, something's really got to change. Ms. Houck?
Yeah, just a couple of things. And, you know, I appreciate that you believe that the lobbyists got the million dollars, but I think in terms of what a lobbyist does, it would be hard to prove that they were the sole reason that we got the million dollars. I don't know how you could prove that that was the actual cause of it. The other thing, and Rick, I'm just going to tell you the background, since you were not here when, when that contract was passed. I did not vote for it, and primarily, it was because, well, I felt the same way, I said the same things that Jane said. But the process by which the lobbyist firm was selected was that the manager talked to different firms and said, "I think this would be a good idea." There was no RFP issued. No other firms were considered and, and, you know, brought up. Nobody, nobody had a chance to bid on the contract. They were brought to us as the firm, and it was a yes or no vote, up or down, on the, on the Maverick lobbyist firm. So I also did not believe that the process was the correct process. But, anyway, here we are. So if you don't want to fund, want to remove funding for it completely, and you want to uphold the rest of the contract, maybe you want to cut that by $30,000 instead of the whole, the whole 60 for the year.
Yeah. Well, that's my other question. I mean, we're, we have a contract, so you can't cut out the full contract, have to at least $30,000 if you want to decide that.
Well, and, you know, all proposed amendment, anybody can amend an amendment, so...
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Wakus, you want to talk?
Oh, yes. My turn. It's my turn. Okay, folks. I start with Division 50, Operations Services, Planning and Zoning, 550.15, Other Contractual Services. Linda, I know you made a proposal about this as well, and I'm proposing we go from 436 to 300,000. I know I'm, I'm appearing a bit severe this time, but I feel that taxpayers can't afford a tax increase this year.
So where did you come up with the number? If I, because I, I mean, I went with $101,000.
Because he...
I think you said we could reduce it.
Right.
So there's another $35,000 that you took out.
Right.
Where did you come up with that?
Right. Because I'm reducing everything.
Oh, okay.
I'm just reducing everything, Linda. Correctional Services, 550.83, Outside Inmate Housing. Harry, I think this kind of goes with what you're talking about. Harry proposes to cut more. I, I say, let's cut from 200 to 100,000. And I think, Harry, you, if you don't mind me saying that, you, you propose further cuts to, down to 80,000.
Yeah.
Okay. So those two amounted to 236,000. And on the backside, I'm proposing no merit increases at all. I know our, our, all of our employees work very, very, very hard. I wish, I wish I didn't have to do this. We don't have any money this year. I mean, we can't, that's how I feel about it. Folks on council, you can, you can vote any way you want, but I'm, I believe we cannot afford the merit increase at all for nonrepresented union, uh, non-elected officials. So I'm proposing we go from 111,450 to zero, and the non-represented elective official staff, Controller from 2,680 to zero, District Attorney to zero, Judiciary to zero, and the total proposed reduction is $236,756,000. Because frankly, I don't know where we're going to get money from. So that's my feeling. Those are my suggestions, the suggested amendments.
Questions for Ms. Wakus? Mr. Hos.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you look, I, I gave four different series of budget amendments. I submitted one last night, Mr. Chairman, I don't sit here in the packet, which I know we can talk about next week. It's only about $9,000 or so.
I thought it was in here.
I don't think I saw it.
Maybe it's not, but I thought it was in here.
Number five. And that's okay, because it was late. No, no, it's, it's okay. But I just, next week, we consider it. Like I said, it's only about $9,000.
I think it's there. December 2nd.
Just last night, yeah.
Yeah, last night.
Oh, was it?
10 o'clock at night.
Yeah, yeah. It was later.
Yeah. It's there.
Okay, thanks. Well, if we could look then, thank you for compiling this. On page one, start with Budget and Finance. And again, again, members, with all, all the suggestions that I have, they're never arbitrary. That comes with talking with staff. We've done this every year, going back to 2012. And I just didn't, I just wanted to be very clear. I didn't just pick numbers out of the air and throw them down there. But if we look at the telescope view over the past several years, between the actuals and the, the proposed, the proposals, some of these, we don't, we keep on not saying anything out of certain line items, and I even thought it was pretty generous, because we just don't see money leaving those areas. But that being said, if we go look at the first one, Budget and Finance, the Contractual Services, that was $20,000. And that was when Mr. Swetz was speaking to us. He said that's for additional audit support, and he said he hopes not to use it, but he'd like to see it there. And again, we had, and this is kind of contingent on, on what Linda suggested about the ADP contract, because with having that, that was supposedly to free up our, our current staff to, to deal with that. So I thought that was a very reasonable number, that 20,000. Tax collection, we had that discussion, too, quite a bit. I propose having $100,000 less, and that's with the commercial property refunds. I know this year, we went over slightly, but we also had a tremendous windfall this year. And that's almost like actuarial science. It's called a science, but there's some, got a lot of guesswork in it as well. And I just think I would like to err on the side of the taxpayers, that we can scrounge up an extra $10,000 here or there, should we go over. But I know we had that debate a few weeks ago. I think that was down Hazel Township, actually, we met there. And I, do you want me to pause, Mr. Chair, for any comments or anything? You just want me to keep on steamrolling through?
People stop here if there are questions.
Very good, thanks.
Everybody all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Controller's office there, just $1,000. If you look at the past couple of years, that $1,000 wasn't, that $2,000 wasn't really used at all. Or if it was, it was very minimal. Same thing with the repairs. My bad, the printing, and then the repairs and maintenance, same, same situation. Division 30, Administrative Services, this is Advertising and Amendments, $6,000 that really wasn't used, and that was even with talking about some changes in polling places. That was the, that was the reasoning, but that didn't come to pass, and certainly this next year, we're not going to see any changes like that. So I recommend cutting that down in half. Purchasing and repairs, same kind of issue. Licensing, Department 4489. Licensing, Department forty, forty-four eighty-nine. If you've just seen, we've had bigger windfalls over the past few years in these areas. And again, these increases are, in my opinion, very conservative, because we went over the thirty-five thousand, even, I think the current date this past year, I don't have my map opened up here, but it's, it was something like forty-two, I believe, offhand or something like that. Same to the bingo, it's only another five hundred dollars or so, but again, it's conservative estimates. Public defender. Exams and witnesses. I like Mr. Greenwald's very precise number, but I, I didn't hear exactly where that came from, that kind of materialized. And again, we look in the past few years, the exams and witnesses, where that was even, that eighty-five still represents an increase, I believe, if I had public defender there. Let's take a look.
Okay, round three?
Sure. I'll tell you, these were corrections, and looking, same situation over the past few years, and talking to Mr. Kovich. Clothing uniforms, we could save there by about ten percent. The next four or five line items there, same type of thing, we haven't used the, utilized the entire line item, except for the outside inmate housing. And that's the same argument Mr. Kovich used. Well, I, I respect him tremendously, he does a great job at our corrections, but I know this is kind of like, if we have to use it, it's there, but that really hasn't been used. I think the last time it was used was, was several years ago. And, you know, council has its purse strings, if we need, if we have an emergency, we're clearly going to be able to deal with that. And I, I think the argument also was, well, if it's really needed, and we need to expend the money real quickly, then we'd like to be able to do that from the staff side, from the managerial side, instead of have to come to council. But, we see budget transfers all the time in county government, and I think that's reasonable. If, if they need to take that out of somewhere, they can do that in the division. Electronic monitoring, same type of situation. Down below.
Before you go.
Absolutely.
The medical dental.
Yes.
For Kovich. Is that covered under the new medical contract that we passed?
The electronic monitoring is not.
No, no. Medical dental, line fifty, five fifty point two one.
The medical equipment, under a certain amount is, once it gets above that, but the dental is not. Each piece of dental equipment is actually owned by the county, and it always has been. It's a private car tractor.
So, it's actually equipment in the, but.
Equipment for dental.
Yeah, but it's not actual service to inmates, it's equipment.
Correct.
To be used for medical and dental.
An autoclave. An autoclave that we had approached two years ago was four thousand dollars.
So, it's actually equipment then?
Can I address some of the other?
Well, you'll have your chance. I mean, let Mr. Hous get through the, you have a couple more items here with the prison corrections.
Just a real quick question, Harry, if I may.
Sure, sure.
Most of these amendments you're making, are all of them based off of, you said discussions where money just wasn't used?
Not all of them, but that, that factored into my reasoning for a lot of these. If you look back over the past three years, going back to twenty eighteen, some weren't used whatsoever, some were a small amount, so I, I suggest cutting them by percentage.
Sure, okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's all about. Minimal offenders unit, we're there near the bottom of that section, again, small tools. Gas, we talked about energy savings as well, and especially the water, you know, this council approved, the council majority approved those shower units, which were, were designed to save water flow, so I, I just see that as a natural pouring of that. And county facility, down below, forty-two thirty-five. First item there in the card is room and board, saving five hundred dollars there.
That's revenue though, right? You're increasing revenue?
Correct, yes, yeah, increasing revenue, yep.
Okay.
And I think I told that too at the top of the next page. So, again, those savings realized thirteen fifty in revenue. Down below expenditures for the same department. Overtime, I know this comes up every year with an issue, and I know it takes a lot of creative management as well. I think if we set the bar, I think that's what we need to ascribe to, and I know this is, this will be up for, for debate, because it is always, every year, but that's only about seven percent decrease in that line item there. Clothing and all the, the other ones down below there from LCCF, from communication expenses, travel expense, mileage, they're minor cuts that yield a big savings when you take them in the aggregate for that section. So I think that is Division of Corrections. Mr. Kovich wants to.
Mr. Kovich, do you want to have a spot, please?
Yeah.
I would actually like to start with the First Amendment, work our way right through each and every one of them.
Sure, yeah, please, Mark, please.
Okay. You have forty-two thirty-three Administration, clothing and uniforms, taking from two hundred thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand.
Yes.
That's actually budgeted for twenty thousand, not two hundred thousand.
So, it would be taking it from eighteen, twenty thousand down to eighteen thousand?
Is that the intent?
Mr. Hous?
Let me just double check my fears.
I'll take the hundred and eighty.
I'm sure you would.
Nice uniforms.
So, you're talking about twenty thousand as a budget, and Mr. Hous, are you proposing a ten percent cut there to eighteen thousand?
For, yeah, for what, two thousand dollars, yeah. Because I apologize, all right, thanks, Mr. Kovich.
No problem. The next, to address that, that's when we hire new officers at our facility. We're actually have to buy, by contract, shirts, uniforms, boots, coat, that's actually in their contract. If you're saying that we've been, you know, not using that line item, we're, I believe, transferring money in every year on that line item.
Fine. I think the discussion was, I think, Mr. Kovich, you said you had a lot of new hires this past year?
No, not last year, not, not in twenty nineteen.
This past year, you didn't?
Eighteen, we had quite a few, and twenty, we're going to need quite a few, as of yet.
And, excuse me, I thought the conversation was you're expecting to have less hires in the new year, going forward with that.
I don't expect to have less.
Okay.
I'm just.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, yeah, please.
Okay, medical and dental, like I said, we did pay four thousand dollars two years ago just for one piece of medical equipment. We could probably live with that.
You can live with the two thousand?
With the two thousand dollars. I mean, I don't want to look like I'm trying to grub everything. Outside inmate housing, I've made the argument every single year, it's a safety and security issue for our facility. During budgets, I had mentioned that, you know, the pre-trial services, we're in the loo right now on that, we, we don't know where we're going. I would hate to see those individuals come back, and I don't believe they will. I think I gave you the number of budget, that that is seven inmates a day for one year at another facility, where we're paying seventy thousand, seventy dollars a day. The money, if we have to use it, two hundred thousand is going to go extremely quickly. When I took over the budget in twenty sixteen, I believe it was four hundred and fifty thousand. Every year I've let that money, you know, be reduced on what, not let, I apologize. That money has been reduced, and I do believe that that requested amount is a reasonable ask.
Yeah, if I could just jump in here real quick, I mean, this is an example of, of Mr. Kovich doing his job, making sure his budget is correct, making sure that he doesn't use this money unless he absolutely, positively has to, making sure that he does his job to make sure that he doesn't have to go to that, to that well, and then being penalized for it. I think that, you know, coming from a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar number down to a two hundred thousand dollar number, Mr. Kovich has proven to be a good, solid steward of the county's money, doesn't use this if he needs to. But, listen, if he needs to move individuals for safety purposes, he's going to have to move them. And that's, and if we're looking to cut the reserve and do those types of things like that, there's not a lot of extra money laying around in order for us to do those things. Mr. Kovich has stepped up time and time again, looked at his budget, he's consistently under budget, because that's because he cares, he works hard at it. I would ask that council gives him the proper, proper number that he believes he needs these things. These numbers that are, these numbers aren't picked up arbitrarily, you know, you know, by, by county administration. And I appreciate, I obviously appreciate everybody's trying to work on this budget, me too, but this particular one, you know, we've talked about this one in the past.
Yeah, if I could too, Mr. Chair, I, I never want to come across like I'm being punitive or like, you know, what have you done for me lately, kind of, kind of, but, you know, you do a great job, I'm very grateful that you're, you're working for Loser County and for the people. And, yeah, I acknowledge that too. But, at the same time, you know, we look at, at, over, our job is to look at where we've come from, and over the past few years, we want to make sure we, that we predict appropriate we're going to use. And I think that is an all hands on deck, and I think it's a worthy discussion. So, again, no disrespect to Mr. Kovich or any of our Division or Department heads either, I just want to be very clear about that.
And I also think every amendment is done in good faith. I think everybody looks at what they think is a realistic situation. I hope that, you know, none of the Division heads believe it's punitive, because, you know, we're looking at all of the divisions, and, you know, that's, unfortunately, that's part of, a big part of the council's work here.
And I hope council is okay with us obviously discussing these things, and not just saying whatever you want to do is fine. At the end of the day, you're, at the end of the day, it's your decision, but we appreciate the opportunity to discuss as to what.
And that's why we're meeting tonight and going through these.
And, and once again, at least I can present what we need the money for.
Yeah.
The choice, I, I do realize is yours completely. The next item would be our blood tests, and it's listed as blood test, genetic test, it's from eight thousand to four thousand, that's for drug screens that are done in the prison.
Okay.
So, we can reduce the number by half.
You can live with the half?
Correct.
Okay.
Electronic monitoring, we are going to a new form of pre-trial services. I believe that we're going to need every penny that we put in there for electronic monitoring, GPS monitoring of those inmates that are going to be on the street instead of in custody.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the electronic monitoring allows you, didn't have inmates who are not housed, so there is a savings in that regard?
Absolutely, but it, we won't even refer them, to them as inmates, they, they're actually bail.
Okay.
They're on bail.
Whatever the proper terminology, I apologize if I use the wrong word.
Correct.
It does, it does provide a savings in the fact that they don't have to be housed at the prison.
Seven dollars a day is what we pay for GPS. The, the small tools, I understand, Mr. Hous, you're only asking for five thousand dollar reduction on that, I mean, five hundred dollars, excuse me, but we have reduced the maintenance line items in our facility by thirty thousand dollars from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. That would be thirty thousand five hundred if we were to add that one in there. The gas, I understand when you look at our past history and say, what I would ask council is, please allow us this year, during budget presentation, I said we're trying to realign our gas bills. That we are, we've made sure we have the number of every meter, electric, gas, water, and ensure that we have, you know, the appropriate numbers moving forward next year. Every one of that would be a budget transfer at some point in time, if we had enough in there. Which is the same with water. The room and board, the increase, I'm sure we can do that. All of the revenues, we're fine with, increasing those. Wages overtime. As of today, I'm at ninety-four percent of my budget for overtime. That number has actually decreased over the years. I understand, you know, management skills on trying to reduce those numbers. Work very hard at trying to reduce our overtime. It's just we have minimum man compliments. I have to make sure I have a certain number of staff. It's not somebody calls off and, oh, well, less will get done. By the contract, we have to have X number of officers on each shift, which is why that number is that way, and I would actually, you know, beg county not to change that one for us. Clothing and uniform amendments, I have it as thirteen, that's okay. The telephone, internet, I believe you could take four hundred and eighty dollars. Just leave us with four hundred and eighty for that line item.
You know, if I could, Mr. Kovich, going back to overtime discussion?
Yep.
Because I know we talked, if you bounced down, and council, I'm on the page in the budget, we spoke about wages, holiday pay, and that's significantly increased over two hundred thousand dollars from twenty nineteen. We talked about, you know, Christmas time and things like that that pop up. And my reasoning was that we increased that there for the, for the holiday pay, because obviously people are going to be taken off around Christmas time and New Year's.
It's not overtime pay.
Okay.
What that holiday pay is.
Those are two different cards.
Yep, sure, we have a seven-tier system. So when you start, you start at fifty percent of a top-rate correctional officer. Takes you seven years to get from year one to a top-rate officer. Very difficult for me to actually pinpoint it, because an officer who is a top-rate working the holiday is being paid more than a first-rate officer that would be working the holiday. So that's why that has increased. The top rate for the officers have increased by the salary contract, and who was working that? What officer, a top rate or, or a new rate, is working that holiday?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so the one, five fifty dot twenty-two, that can be reduced to four hundred and eighty.
So, sixty-five twenty?
I'm sorry.
Four hundred and eighty dollars?
I'm wrong. Five fifty dot twenty-five.
Four hundred and eighty dollars at a five twenty?
Correct.
What did you say about five fifty twenty-two?
Five fifty twenty-two can be reduced by a thousand.
Okay, that's okay.
And then five fifty twenty-five is the one that I mentioned, could it go to four hundred and eighty? The travel expenses, I'm sure we can live with the suggested cut.
Okay.
The mileage, currently, today, I'm sitting at four thousand and eight dollars in my, in, in that line item. With additional mileage slips still coming in. So I, I believe that the three thousand dollars is pretty fair. I'm already a thousand over that.
Yeah, it sounds like you're over three thousand.
I am over that, but I just want to make it clear.
Okay.
The water I asked, I mean, that we, we don't touch, and other than that, I, I appreciate your time and listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, Mark.
Mr. Hous, you ready to go back on operational?
Uh, yes, yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Plan zoning, this is the same thing that Ms. Hou brought up to, Mr. Eddy spoke to. Buildings and grounds, sewage system there, ten thousand five hundred. Pest control, down by one-third cut. And repairs and maintenance, same thing at the bottom. Yep. Yes, yep, that's right, other, oh, the, yeah, the contractual, yep. And we're still in, in building and grounds.
Yep.
So, those stand, and the next page, it's the boiler unit, and we spoke about, and these are just all minor cuts, again, based on those line items not being utilized over the past few years.
Mr. O'Neil, do you have any comments when we get to that regard?
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to just touch on, on the planning and zoning, Mr. Eddy is here, but I can speak to that.
Yeah.
I wanted to mention that we had, we had offered council the reduction of a hundred and one thousand dollars based on some changes in three key components that make up that number. I do want to point out with regard to Ms. Wakus's suggestion, that we are basically under obligation between our bike ped study, our hazmat plan update, and our long-range transportation plan at this time, we're obligated for three hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. So I, I would feel that cutting that three hundred thousand would create a, a problem and a shortage of, of funding for those, for those plans that are underway.
So, you're suggesting three thirty-five?
Well, I, I left us about three thousand dollars of a little bit of leeway there, it wasn't very much. Right now, our, our costs for those are budgeted for three thirty-one, two fifty.
So, three thirty-five is what you're requesting?
That's what we're requesting.
Yeah.
So, I would like to ask that you consider keeping that number at the...
Uh, that's what Mr. Haas is suggesting.
Mr. Haas's and Ms. Houck's suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was the one that was into the bigger part.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to say that tho- those numbers are pretty firm and have been determined based on, on commitments that we've made through contract obligations. With regard to building and grounds, um, I'd like to call Bill McIntosh up. He can speak to some of these items.
All right. The first one we'll start with is with sewer. Now, our sewer payments are, a lot of them are based on usage. So, we won't see the fourth quarter bills until January. So, we've currently, year-to-date, we spent eight thousand nine hundred and four dollars. But extrapolating out what the next bills for the fourth quarter will be, we should target around eleven thousand seven hundred dollars this year. Now, next year, if there's, um, increased water usage or an increase in the sewer fee, of course, that will go up. So, I would strongly recommend we keep that one at twelve thousand dollars. That's about where we'll be. Pest control. I could, um, agree with some reduction in that. Currently, we're at two thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars. Now that it's a cold, we may get more, um, vermin looking for a warm place to go. So, we usually see a little uptick in that. So, we could probably get a little reduction on that.
What kind of little reduction are you speaking about?
Thirty-five hundred. I think we can live with safely.
That, that includes both contracted services that we're obligated to monthly for routine springs and it also includes additional calls that we have to make above and beyond those services.
Can you say to Mr. O'Neil what the contracted amount is offhand? You know, like, per month or per year?
We did have that today. I believe the contractor amount was somewhere in the area of twenty-eight hundred, twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Twenty, twenty-nine, okay.
And so far this year, we accrued about six hundred dollars in additional expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Repairs and maintenance?
Repairs and maintenance. So, we've asked for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, reduction to one twenty-five. Currently, we're at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in expenses. And we still have additional, four weeks to go.
So, what kind of repair and maintenance would fall in that line?
Okay, a lot of this, um, I believe it's around forty-two thousand dollars just for elevators. That's repairs, contractual services, required testing.
So, that's a third of it.
About a third, correct. Uh, life safety, that's fire sprinklers, um, monitoring, testing. Uh, we're about eighty-one hundred dollars on that one, year-to-date. HVAC, that's a big one. Compressors go or there's issues, belts. Um, we do do maintenance on them, but, um, we have a lot of HVAC in this county for all the buildings. Some of it's upgraded to newer, some of it's not. So, um, that's where a lot of the...
Hopefully, a lot of it's not upgraded with the, with the energy project, right?
We have done a lot of upgrades with regard to our maintenance. But, but I, I would like to point out that in the last two years, with Bill coming on board, building and grounds, uh, with some additional staffing additions that we made in engineering, you know, I think we've really stepped up to keep our buildings maintained and not let them get to the point where a repair cost becomes exorbitant because it's ignored for two or three or four or five years. So, we've been trying to take a more proactive stance. And I think that if, if you look at, at some of the bills and some of the things we did, I, I think that, that speaks to itself. But, there are a lot of things that have to be maintained. And based on where we are this year, we, we feel that's, that's a fair number.
Can I address the custodial position?
Yep, that's what I was just asking.
Oh, very good.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Uh, so, day shift, we have, um, we have nine people on day shift. We have a mailroom clerk, two maintenance people, a groundskeeper, a management assist, uh, secretary to generate purchase orders, pay bills, coordinate all these maintenance activities. And, um, we have a vacant position. And we have three, only three...
What's the vacant position?
That was the foreman, the foreman position. And that only leaves us three custodians on day shift. Now, those three custodians, they ma, um, they clean central court. Has anybody ever been in central court? A lot of people go through there. EMAs, sometimes they have big crowds of things and that takes a lot of manpower. The engineering in the garage, they ma, they clean that in a day. The entire courthouse annex across the street's done before they arrive. Office of Community Development over there on Franklin Street. Um, and, of course, uh, the courthouse. Believe it or not, when we have a hundred and fifty jurors come in, we have to actually service and restock the bathrooms on the second floor. After the snowfall, we put a lot of ice melter out there. That gets tracked in. So, there's a lot of maintaining the steps, monitoring, um, sweeping, cleaning. So, there's a lot of stuff actually in this courthouse is done during the day also. So, what we're being asked is to pick up the records building in addition to all these other, or let's see now, one, two, three, four, five, six, six other buildings. And we just don't do that. We have to make deliveries every day, water, paper, supplies. And mail, that's part of the mailroom. And when the mailroom clerk's off, so, one of these people have to pick up that, those duties.
So, did we add a position when you picked up central court?
No, we did not.
Okay, but you also have a vacant position.
That's correct.
So, you're operating and you're doing everything that you do and you do a great job.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job. But you have a vacant position. Why shouldn't we add yet another position?
Because everything's not getting done in a timely fashion.
And that position's been vacant for about a while?
Yeah.
Okay, but you, but you still have...
Right, so when the snowstorm came yesterday? Well, I only have four people to work it. I had to bring them in two hours early, um, at six AM, in the dark, starting all the equipment going. And then they had to work, then, when we were finished cleaning the snow, then they had to start their normal duties. And we had four people to ma, um, to clean all these buildings. Now, of course, nine-one-one and the prison, they do their thing because they're a unique organization. So, uh, we had to go to Penn Place, um, the courthouse. All these buildings had to all be cleared within those two hours before all the public and employees come. So, if, um, and no one's been upstairs to the second floor. Take a look and see what we've done to help maintain and fix some of these offices to get them up to the standard. A lot of electrical issues, which was actually, we were told by our insurance company, we're extension cords plugged into the extension cords and plugged into the extension cords. Well, we resolved all that. We're, we're very close to resolving all that. And this is what we need to keep going because we have so many buildings and it's been neglected. They've been neglected for so long. We're trying to get ahead of this. So, in the interim future, um, we, we need to keep this up to get these buildings back to where we need to be. And unfortunately, that takes people and some money to do.
The idea of adding the custodian though was before the records retention building.
Right.
And in place of a cleaning contract.
Okay.
So, that was the beginning of that discussion.
Right.
And I think we've come to realize that, you know, the cleaning contract is sixty-two hundred dollars or something.
That's what they're saying.
Versus, uh, an employee, which is, would be considerably more as far as salary and benefits, so...
Right, well, that's another person we can use to help maintain these other buildings.
I understand that, but, I mean, that was the beginning of that discussion.
Right. And I'm not sure what that contract entails, but that's a pretty big building.
Well, they only do the public area.
I see. Well, eventually, somebody's going to have to get...
So, that's a much smaller footprint than...
With all that, records is basically paper. And that, they're in a great dust. So, eventually, somebody's going to have to go back there and maintain that back.
They have a records manager too. And other staff there, so...
So, um, no, if you, if you, you know, we can keep going, it'd be, the hell, additional person would be a big help on day shift. If not, we'll just keep doing what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get through operations, Mr. Haas?
Uh, not quite. We're, we're on the last page there. We're on the boiler unit for under operations.
If I can just go through some of your suggested amendments and I'll try to address them as, as quickly and efficiently as possible. I can tell you that under small tools, again, it's a very small allotment, uh, for, for minor things that are needed. But I know that, uh, we have encumbered about thirteen eighty-five year-to-date. That's not what's reflected in the budget report. So, I would at least ask if we can possibly keep that at thirteen fifty. That's what we, that's what we were at this year at, at this point in time. Five fifty twenty-two telephone internet, um, that is probably not a problem from twelve fifty to nine fifty. That, that is acceptable. We can work with that. Five fifty forty-five repairs to buildings, um, from five thousand to four thousand. Again, uh, we try to keep a very small contingency in there, but, uh, we can, we can work with the four thousand for that, for that area, for building, for boiler plant. Uh, five fifty forty-seven repairs, uh, to machinery. I, I would, I would like to ask, this includes all of our contracts for, um, the boiler plant. A lot of that is contractual obligations. Uh, as a matter of fact, I believe we have about twenty-eight thousand five hundred in contractual obligations. So, there was a small amount kept in there for other things that could possibly come up throughout the year. But I would like to ask that we at least keep that, if not thirty-five to thirty-two-five? If we can consider that?
Thank you.
And meet halfway. Five fifty forty-eight repairs miscellaneous. This is for, um, again, th- these are small items. I, I think we have exceeded, I, I know it's not reflected in our report. I think we're at about six fifty. It's for some very small items. I would like to ask that we keep that at a thousand. But if we have to, we, we will try to work around it, but... Five sixty, five sixty-sixty-four meetings and conferences. There are two conferences that Mr. Dudik, our mechanical systems engineer, typically attends each year. The reason that there were no expenses accrued this year is because of the IT cyber attack. He wasn't able to attend one of them. The other one was not held this year. And the two of them together adds up to about twenty-two and change. So, I would like to ask if we can, if you can consider, um, maybe reducing that from twenty-five hundred, which was what we had in there last year, to twenty-two fifty. I think we could still manage to send them, but that's strictly for two conferences that are attended annually.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And if we want to move down to EMA?
Sure, absolutely.
All right, for five fifty twenty-two telephone internet, we have approximately fifteen hundred and seventy, seventy-five dollars a month that we accrue in monthly expenses. We have three months that are not accrued. We're expecting that number based on the number that you have in your budget, uh, performance reports, to be just over eighteen thousand dollars this year. Now, that does increase annually. It has increased annually for the last several years.
And that's a critical element of that operation, right?
Yes, it's, it's, it is a critical element. We may come in under twenty-two. I, I would think we're probably going to be somewhere between twenty and twenty-one, depending upon the increases. That's not something we, we know at this point in time. But, again, to, to not get down to sixteen would create a, a problem because, as I said, we're, we're, we're planning right now on coming in about eighteen-three, eighteen-four.
Okay, thank you.
The remaining balance was, was for anticipated increase in costs. Uh, repairs and machinery, uh, repairs, uh, for machinery, three thousand to two thousand. This line item is strictly for generator repairs. We did incur a few costs, but that, that is exclusively what that line item's used for. So, um, I know we, we increased that from last year, but that's because we had some expenses this year. That's for the in-house generator, which is obviously critical to the operation of the building in the event of an emergency situation. Uh, we now have that under, under a maintenance contract, uh, as we do all of our generators throughout the campuses, campus. I would ask that if, if we can consider, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars for that amount, reduce, a reduction of five hundred as opposed to a thousand.
Thank you.
Uh, five fifty forty-eight, uh, these are miscellaneous repairs that come up. And this line item, we, we try to, uh, use for oddball things. Sometimes, there are gray areas between building repairs and machinery and equipment. We try to keep them separate. But I, I can tell you that if we were to reduce this to six thousand, this is all cost shared with our four sixty account for the EMA building. And I think we've done a pretty good job over the years of keeping, for building maintenance, we have fourteen thousand factored in for buildings. Uh, we have the eight thousand under miscellaneous. And then, of course, the, as I, as I asked, twenty-five hundred dollars for the machinery and equipment. You know, if, I, I, I would be very remiss to, to say that we can work with a reduction to six thousand dollars without possibly increasing the building repairs by the same amount.
Okay.
Based on what we've experienced the last couple of years.
Right, thank you.
Again, that's cost shared. So, keep in mind, we do take money from the four sixty account. Thirty-three and a third percent is cost shared. So, we do try to keep that at, at a minimum.
Very good. Mr. Haas, you have another, uh, page here?
I do, I do, next page.
The one you sent us last evening?
Sure, uh, it's around here, there, sure enough it is. Just, um, some extra revenue for the coroner's department.
Mr. Holgard?
Yeah, I can take this one, Mr. Chair, just to move along. Uh, the, the revenue on the coroner reports I've no issue with. The autopsy reports, the numbers, I, I'm a little concerned about the six thousand number, maybe fifty-five hundred, maybe a more reasonable revenue request item.
Fifty-five hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And the toxicology reports, uh, you know, what, yeah, I think we'll be okay with that twenty-five hundred dollar number.
Okay.
But once again, those are, you know, we, we don't control those. If people come in, they come in, kind of ideas to, to where they're at. Uh, the repairs, maintenance, um, of the, uh, pro bono tary, that, that is utilized for all the, the, the items, um, in the, in the pro bono tary's office and the clerk of court's office. So, uh, we're going to hope that council will remain at the three thousand dollar number.
Okay.
Hey, very good. I mean, the, these line items are never fun to hope we get more revenue from, of course. But, again, I'm looking at the past two years and, um, even with the autopsy reports, that was, it's unfortunate. To date, it's, it's, uh, eleven thousand dollars for that one. But, um, again, they're minimal, minimal savings altogether. Thanks, Mr. Manager. Thirteen, the courts down below, uh, same thing, miscellaneous expenses, cut that item in half by fifteen hundred. Telephone internet, I think, Mr. Shetaski, I think I saw him here tonight, if you could stress that.
Mr. Shetaski, sir.
Um, I, I think he actually suggested that one offhand, but I might be mistaken. Yeah, please, please.
Unfortunately, what you're suggesting today has not been shared with us. I don't know if I can comment with that. However...
Years passed, so sorry about that.
Uh, however, I like to say that, you know, I like to say that we worked all over the Thanksgiving weekend, but we did not. Uh, we actually did it yesterday. Uh, but today, we presented in the afternoon to the county manager, uh, our own proposals on what we can do. Uh, and because also, we're working with the, uh, budget and finance, as we talked about, for the new programs. Uh, and it dealt with not only in reducing and eliminating things, uh, but also increasing revenue. Uh, and the proposal that we submitted to be finalized and presented to council in some form or fashion, has a positive effect on the budget of over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so, we've made our own cuts. We found more revenue in things that we can do. And perhaps the things that you're suggesting we're looking at here, maybe we've already done ourselves and agree with it. So, it might be more feasible for me to come back next week or wait till...
No, no, we're going to get to that.
Or, or, if, if we go through the numbers that we have right now.
We're going to get to that, Mr. Chair.
If we can do that, that's fine. But I, we are working together to try to make all these things...
Don't leave us yet. You're going to be back.
Or whatever you prefer. Just, just give me some benefit of the doubt because I haven't seen the list from Mr. Haas today.
Mr. Haas, do you want to go to your next, uh...
Sure, uh, the last one and the most controversial was the, uh, the, to keep the, our, our payment, or pension payment the same. But obviously, we can't do that because we are, uh, cast withholding upstate statute. So, I will withdraw that amendment for the one point five million.
Thank you. Then the next couple amendments are amendments that I put together with some help from different people. First page I have, is that? Yeah. Excuse me? Yeah, you'll have your chance. Okay?
Sorry, Mr. Green.
No problem, you'll have your chance. You can, you'll have the podium. The general amendments that I looked, worked at coincide with some of the things that have already been talked about. The IT position to go to one and the custodial position. And, uh, parking, uh, we know that there's been an RFP out there.
Yeah, I have that number here. I believe it's, I believe it's nine thousand three hundred dollars.
Versus what last year?
It's a nine thousand three, nine thousand three hundred dollar reduction from last year.
All right, so, nine thousand three hundred dollar reduction?
Correct.
Based on the RFP results?
Correct.
And, of course, in the district attorney's office, we know there's one vacant detective position, uh, due to a untimely death. And if you look at the differential between the salary that that person was at versus a new person coming in in that position with their benefits, it'd be about thirty-three thousand dollar differential. in that position with their benefits, it'd be about thirty-three thousand dollar differential. Okay? Now, the next sheet is the courts.
Was that ninety-three hundred dollars the revenue side, or was that an expenditure?
That's a reduction in parking.
Reduction in parking, so we did the RFP, we got a reduced rate in parking, so that's split between us and probation.
Where is that line?
Parking's all over the place, but there is parking in courts under probation. Okay.
Where?
Mr. Shkowsky, we're back up for you, please. As Mr. Shkowsky indicated, because of the Catholic charities dropping out of the program and the courts and DA's offices, et cetera, have to take over, there is an increase of three hundred and forty thousand dollars in that particular line item.
Yes, we anticipate.
But it's because of that program that you're going to have to pick up now.
And the revenue side will increase by three hundred and forty thousand dollars, yes.
But a lot of that money is already going to be designated for.
Right, about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, as I recall, has to go to cover for the people and the facility and the books and all of those things for it.
Yeah, all those things.
Right, and there is a gap in between the two of them, and we estimate at least some of that money will go after we work with the sheriff's office to help defray their expenses.
Yeah, to cover the buildings when they have those classes.
Yes.
And then the next item, four sixty twenty-eight, this is where you have a two hundred thousand dollar increase in revenue, went from nine hundred to one point one million?
Yes, that was in the probation office.
In the probation office.
Yes, we worked with that, and it's always difficult with probation office domestic relations, because we're dealing with federal regulations and programs and so forth. But we're confident that that revenue we can generate through our programs and reimbursements with the state. So that's a plus to add to our, to add to the budget amendment, that money.
Okay. And going down to under magistrates, the video conferencing, the proposal was fifty thousand. I think you said you could work with forty thousand?
Yes, we reduced that by ten thousand.
Okay. And the courts under capital cases, five sixty point one zero, one thirty down to one twenty?
Yes, we reduced that because we anticipate that the major capital case will be in early, late winter, early spring will be over, and those expenses should alleviate. So that's why we feel we can reduce that one.
Okay, and then arbitration, five sixty point one two, from thirty-two thousand down to twenty-seven thousand.
Yes, we're reducing that because the backlog of arbitration clauses have been cleared up, and we don't need as many hearings.
Going down to probation under the defense side, you've asked to have the wages on call go back up to, was it in the proposed budget, fifteen thousand? Looks like it's fifty thousand.
Yes.
Right, there has to be an increase of thirty-five. Wages longevity, five ten fifty, from one hundred and eighty-six thousand down to one sixty-two, which is a reduction of twenty-four thousand.
Yes, and I think there should be kudos all around on that one because the new union contracts contain new formulas for longevity. And as we hire new people, the longevity cost has been going down. And that's, the twenty-four thousand dollars, I believe, is less we discover we can do because the contract allows us to do. And that's compliments to those who negotiate the contracts with the new amounts.
Under, under contractual, five fifty fifteen, it was proposed at ten thousand, you're saying you need twenty thousand?
I don't remember offhand what that one was, honestly.
Yeah, so it's, that, I have a wrong number there, that should be an increase of ten thousand dollars. Travel expense, five fifty twenty-seven goes from five thousand down to three?
Yes, yes, we agreed with that.
So it's a two thousand dollar reduction. Parking is probably will change, but.
It's fifty thousand dollars now, but that's provided to us by the county. We don't know what the ultimate number will be.
But there'll be a reduction, yeah?
I presume.
And we hope that we'll have that number. Five fifty forty-nine, repairs, maintenance of software, it was proposed at forty. You're saying that you need additional ten thousand up to fifty, so it's a ten thousand dollar increase.
Yes.
And then other treatment support, which is part of the drug court?
Yes, that, I think inadvertently, we cut like thirty-five thousand dollars from drug court. And of course, we want to fully fund drug court. That was, I don't think people.
That was an increase of thirty-five thousand.
Or a restoration, I should say, it's, yeah.
So there'll be a net increase of, the revenue will more than offset those, plus a, maybe about a hundred and twenty thousand?
We anticipate it to be about a hundred and twenty thousand to the good, that's our budget amount.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on this? So looking back up at the revenue for probation, it looks to me like you're actually adding five hundred forty thousand in revenue.
Right, but the three hundred and forty thousand would be for the, the Catholic charities dropped that program. So they're going to have to pick it up. So most of that money, two hundred and eighty thousand or the three forty, will be used up in providing those services that Catholic charities do.
So where do we see those expenses then?
Mr. Shkowsky handed it out last week when he was here.
Yes, that's the handout.
In the handout, yeah.
And we're working, we're working with the budget and finance, but they were kind of busy today and yesterday on revising those numbers. And I think Brian will have those ready for, when the time comes to present them in a more formal fashion.
So, okay.
Okay, but these are changes in revenue, so you're actually saying you're going to add three hundred forty thousand in revenue?
Right, for that line.
Even though you're going to take out two eighty, that's another thing.
Yes.
And then you're going to add another two hundred thousand in expense reimbursement. So shouldn't your grand total here be five hundred forty thousand?
Well, I don't think they have, yes, as far as the new revenue, but then we're going to have to add expenses to balance the.
Well, I know, but, you know.
And until we have those sorted out, I didn't want to put it in there knowing that most of it's going to be used up.
Yes, there'll be five forty, new revenue, but then from that, we're going to take out.
Two seventy, two eighty.
Something like that amount, yes.
Okay, so over the five, well, five forty, and then whatever you're going to do with that is another thing. But under your expenses, then, you're actually not decreasing expenses, you're actually increasing expenses by twenty-nine thousand.
Yes.
You had thirty-nine, but you said that one of those twenties should have been a tenth, right?
And most of that was to fix.
So you're actually increasing expenses by twenty-nine thousand dollars?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll formalize that and get that all straightened out, but that's the.
Yes, and I hoped it would have been done today, but again, we were all busy, and that will be done very shortly.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Shkowsky?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, hang on one.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, last week, Mr. Shkowsky talked about a budget officer, that position's been vacant for a year. Seems like he's doing a real good job at budgeting him and Mr. Hindmarsh, and I just recommend that we defund that position permanently.
I think that was in the domestics, is that right?
We have a, we have a position that we refer to as the accountant budget officer over there. And as a matter of fact, I believe the advertisement period for hiring for that position was over on Friday. And that is certainly a position we have to do. Another reason we have to do this is, I was actually startled by this today. We got the instructions on our budget for domestic relations next year. And generally, what we have to do is, we have to have Mr. Kane sign off on it, that he verifies it. I signed off as a court administrator, and now the state is putting a triple bind. And now they want a financial officer to also sign off on our budget request. And we don't have a position, a financial officer, to do that. So that's another example of why we're going to need this financial position.
And what's the funding ratio for domestics?
It runs about, we fund about thirty percent of it through the general fund, seventy percent of it through state grants and reimbursements. And we're at the maximum amount, so we cannot go back and ask for anything more than that. We're at the maximum amount now, due to the good work that office does.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, attorney? I have a couple items here that I listed, and you'll have an opportunity to speak to what Mr. Haas had indicated, okay?
So I'd like to take the opportunity, Harry, to, or Mr. Haas, to refresh your recollection. If you recall, when I gave my budget presentation, you asked me specifically where that number came from, because it is kind of a, not a round number.
Yes.
And I, my answer to you was, that was the number that I anticipated spending this year. So as of today, I'm at just short of sixty-nine thousand dollars already paid out of that budget. There are bills sitting in accounts payable from October and November. I think I've authorized about twenty thousand dollars worth of bills. So I anticipate using the ninety-two, maybe even a little bit more than that. So I just want to kind of go over historically where that number came from. If you recall, in two thousand and ten, the county was sued for failing to properly fund the public defender's office. As a result of that litigation, when I took over this job in April of two thousand and thirteen, the county funded that, and the number in that particular budget line item was a hundred thousand dollars. Shortly after that, I want to say maybe two years ago, three years ago, the courts zeroed out their budget line item for expert witnesses. As a result of that, fifty thousand dollars came into my budget, and I think twenty-five thousand went into Mr. Higgin's budget. So my, that budget went up to a hundred and fifty. I acknowledge that I've never used a hundred and fifty. So over the past couple of years, that number's kind of been whittled away. I kind of want to, I'd like to keep it like it is. I think it's important that everybody recognize that this is the practice of law. This is not, and I'm just speaking for myself and speaking for the people who work in the PD's office. It's not, we're not buying widgets, we're not buying shades or windows. Every case is different, every case requires a level of expertise, a level of independent judgment, and a level of advocacy that can only really come from properly funding the budget. And I think in this particular area, I come back year after year after year, and it seems to be, this is one area where, while you've been really good to me in other areas, kind of, you know, let's face it, as a result of litigation against the prior council or prior commissioners, prior administrations, I constantly am defending this particular line item. I need the money, I use the money, we use the money. I have a good bunch of lawyers who I encourage to litigate issues. For example, we have discussion in the past couple of weeks about hiring a handwriting expert. We had a discussion in the last couple of weeks in the office about hiring a racial bias expert as far as the recognition, as far as identification of witnesses or identifications goes. This is something that we kind of pride ourselves on, the quality of the work that we do. And the reason that we're able to do that is because we're properly funded. I know that there is a mechanism for me to come back here and request money out of the general fund. You're tremendously reducing the general fund, number one. Number two, the process is very bulky. It took two months when I had to come here to get death penalty funding. It took me two months to get that. And probably most importantly, the process requires me, the process requires the lawyers in my office to reveal litigation strategy to the Commonwealth, because I have to come here and tell you why I need the money. I tell you, I'm telling the district attorney, I'm telling the world. And I think that's incredibly unfair. I think it's not right as it relates to a Sixth Amendment right to counsel. Those things are secret. If I'm going to represent anybody in this room, anybody who's a lawyer, who's not a lawyer, knows that their, the strategies that I use, or the lawyers in the office use, should be confidential. They shouldn't have to come here, especially in public, and disclose the strategies. So I'm really, really careful about the money that I spend in the office. I've never gone over my budget, but year after year, I have to come here and justify this particular line item. I'm going to use that money this year. I think I have twenty thousand dollars worth of bills sitting in accounts payable. I'd like you to kind of, to withdraw your amendment.
Chair Matt?
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Grail, first of all, appreciate you, just like I spoke with Mr. Markovich. You have done a lot more with less, even though we have funded the office much better in recent years, too. I remember you talking about doing onsite house upkeep inside your offices and stuff. We remember those stories. And this council did unanimously also support, when you came back to ask for those funds, I don't remember telling me about that, about divulging sensitive matters. So that was some instruction from me.
This is the first time I've mentioned that.
Yeah, and I don't recall, well, that makes me feel, because I didn't want to think I would miss something like that. But again, you know, the process is never about, you know, being punitive, and obviously, we want to support you and the staff about this. Are there other areas you could possibly save besides this line item for this, anything else in the budget?
No.
Because I don't want this turned to, like I said before.
I give you a guy's budget based upon what I anticipate needing and what I anticipate spending. It's hard in what I do and what the public defender's office does, because we can never anticipate what comes down the road. For example, two years ago, fifty people were arrested in one drug sting. That created havoc in my office, in conflict council's office, in the courts. I can't budget for that. All I can do is give you the best estimate of what I think I'm going to need. So I can't look at the budget and say to you, you know, cut this. This is my best work on what I think my office will need to properly operate in 2020.
And that being said, I know, I believe we spoke about this just last year, about having a consortium of professional examiners, for lack of a better word, whatever they're called. You have professional witnesses that come in, that if, across the state, we could have people have, they get paid a flat rate by the state, and then it's a consortium, it's maybe perhaps offered to county PDs or to county DA's even on that side of that, too.
Again, you're kind of impinging upon the obligation I have to exercise, or lawyers have to exercise their independent judgment. If I want, I mean, I'm not going to kind of dance around this. If I want a particular result, for example, if I want someone deemed incompetent, I'm going to go hire someone who I think is going to find my client incompetent. If I want someone who, experts are experts, they're hired for a reason. So the Commonwealth does have resources that I've taken advantage of in several cases. For example, the Commonwealth will do competency evaluations, they're free. I use them, we do use them, we use them a lot. But in certain cases that are close, and in certain cases where I know the Commonwealth is going to oppose my feeling or my determination, and I make it, like, the lawyers in my office, when I use the word "I", I'm talking about the office, they make a determination of competency. We do that every single day. And on close cases, I'm going to hire an advocate. I'm not going to hire someone who's employed by the Commonwealth as part of the consortium. It's, you know, I hate to keep saying this, and I don't mean to be redundant, but we're unique within the county, we do something very, very unique. I'm not going to apologize for that, I'm kind of proud of that, I'm glad. It makes our job very, very interesting, and actually, very rewarding. So, I mean, I just can't point to anything, really, that I think I can, I can give up.
We know, Ms. Grail, we know your job isn't, talking about your whole staff, it's not necessarily financially rewarding. We acknowledge that, too. But, you know, thank you for what you do and for coming here. And I hope you don't take any of this personal, because all is, we're trying to pinch every penny. And that's where we're coming from, or that's where I'm coming from, I'll speak for myself.
And while you're standing there, I propose a similar amendment to Mr. Haas.
Okay, so I haven't seen those, but I'm happy to respond to them.
Well, there's, it's actually a saving, almost. Examination of witnesses, you spoke about already, travel expense would be a little bit different.
What I am doing is encouraging the attorneys in my staff to take advantage of opportunities where they will be exposed to nationwide experts in different areas of the law. For example, I went to a seminar not too long ago where, and some of the other attorneys in the office joined me at that seminar, where I spent the afternoon with a Harvard Law professor. We spent a week with a MacArthur Foundation Genius Award winner. If I'm given the, any opportunity to expose the lawyers in my office to that type of experience that benefits basically everyone in this room, but most importantly, the clients that we represent, I'm going to do that. So it costs money to do that. I just think, you know, I understand your expression of wanting to save money, but I think that saving money on the backs of the indigent is not the right way to go.
Well, unfortunately, you know, those people that you serve, which obviously, we know, they're just, they have issues, whatever they may be, whether it be poverty or education, whatever. But, you know, that's what you serve, and that's not going to change, because your office is there because of that reason.
Right, or statutorily required to, the county is statutorily required to provide this service. And I've said this many times, I want this to be. And I've said this many times, I want this to be the best law office in the county. And that's what I try to accomplish every single day.
But you understand that we have fiscal restraints like any other place?
I understand every single day that there are constraints on my goals.
Yeah, and on our goals. Now, I think the council as a whole tries to do the best job they can, and part of that is to look at the budget and scrutinize it and try to come up with options that maybe better serve. But that's our side of it, and we understand that you have a side that you have to work with.
I understand.
Yeah.
We have a lot of indigent taxpayers, too, when it comes down to it.
Well, and that's, you know, what we're dealing with. We have to respond to those people, just as you have to respond to your clients.
Someday, we'll have the larger discussion about how if I had even more funding, I could probably serve the taxpayers even better. Between my office and the district attorney's office, I would think, we're already talking about things to drastically reduce the population of the prison. So you fund us both properly, we'll come through on that end. The taxpayers will be better served.
That would be a big plus. Thank you. Yes.
The thing that I think is unfair to the public defender's office is that the examination of witnesses always comes up, and it's always so much less money than the examination of witnesses in the DA's office. And I think, I know I brought that up last year, too, because we didn't cut anything in the DA's office under examination of witnesses.
Because of the fact, I think they had two capital cases scheduled at that point. I think that was something that...
And I had to come here, if you recall, and go through the process of requesting funds. So the one case thankfully resolved, and there's one case that's pending...
Yeah, one has been resolved.
But there, aren't they still...
No, one was conflicted out.
Yeah. I think that's, you know, so currently, there's nothing on the docket for a capital case?
We do not have any capital cases pending.
Currently, there's nothing on the docket at this point.
Correct.
Thank you. And then, in the last, is under operations, we already talked about planning zoning, $101,000. I suggested an engineering and architectural $10,000 cut, and agriculture a $1,950 cut. It's sort of in line with what last year's figures were, and it seems to be in line with what they're spending. You know, I think Mr. O'Neill has responded to a lot of that stuff already, correct?
Yes.
Buildings and grounds, material and supply requisition, $5,000 cut, electricity $30,000, gas $5,000, water $6,000, repairs and maintenance $10,000. Again, because of some of the energy project pieces that you put together, I think some of the utility numbers are able to come down at this point.
I did not, I did not have a chance to get a copy of your proposed amendments. I don't think I saw those, but I apologize.
No, they weren't provided as a head time.
No, they weren't.
Mr. O'Neill, could you, could you address the engineering, architectural, planning and zoning, $130,000 down to $120,000 in planning and zoning? How would that affect that office?
Well, the engineering and architectural, again, there's a revenue that's tied to that expenditure. And what happened last year is we tried to decrease that expenditure, or we tried to maintain it, and we had a boom. It's a lot of subdivision and land development plan reviews. So for every dollar, so to speak, that we spend out of that line item, we have a corresponding revenue that affords us about a 5% to 6% gain or administrative fee. So the two numbers are directly linked, and that's revenue, I don't have the line item...
So is revenue showing a $10,000 increase?
Well, the problem, the problem was...
Is the revenue showing a $10,000 increase? Yes or no?
It's, it'll be showing a more than a $10,000 increase. It's showing the $10,000 plus the administrative fee that we, that's factored in there.
So I would recommend you don't cut that $10,000, because we're going to lose the revenue on the other side.
And what happened was, it's a direct tie, so we set that number where we felt comfortable last year, and it was higher, and it created havoc, trying both on the revenue and expenditure side. So by keeping that number up with regard to this year's numbers, it's not, again, if we were to cut that $10,000, I would have to recommend that we cut the revenue side $15,000, which is not going to get us anywhere. That's going to give us a net change of $5,000 loss. Okay?
About the agricultural? $12,000 is the number he had currently.
Again, the agricultural program, that fee is also tied to a revenue, Mr., that's directly tied to a revenue as well.
These funds for that line item are only tied to monies that are going toward actual farms. We don't, that number is not money that goes toward the preservation, it's just for administrative cost. So whatever number you put in there, again, you'd have to reduce the amount of the revenue on the same side to roughly the same number. So you're not realizing any change in the operation. It's still going to be a one-for-one. So whatever you bring in is whatever goes out the door, so...
That's an in and out.
Yeah.
So those two, I would recommend that you don't cut, based upon the revenue from the lines from there. With regards to building and grounds, we reviewed the repairs and maintenance line item and the electricity, gas and water. My only concern there is that we, you're going off of numbers of where we were in October. We did already...
No, I'm going off the fact that you had an energy project that is supposedly saving the gas...
And we did cut it by quite a bit.
If you look at the numbers from last year, there is a reduction, and, you know...
I understand that, I did look at the numbers from last year.
Based on our, based on our estimates, that's where we felt comfortable coming down to, but understandable, yes, there was savings.
When I stopped by the boiler plant and spoke to the gentleman that operates there, did a real nice job, the place is immaculate. I think he's using 500 gallons of water a month now. Before the energy project, he was using 5,000.
I don't know if those are the numbers, but there's a significant, there's a significant savings in water, because we were losing it through the lines.
Yeah, because of the...
Correct, that's correct.
Now with the new boilers and the new systems...
But that water was not out of building and grounds, that was out of boiler plant.
So we should cut it there?
Well, we did cut it there substantially, but that water that he was losing and that he was referring to, when he was telling you about the savings, would have been recognized in his budget, not in building and grounds.
Okay. And boiler plant's right below it.
Again, I unfortunately did not have an opportunity to review these, to really prepare myself to respond. I can say that with the utilities, we made reductions that we felt were reflecting what we've experienced so far this year. There's always that variation from year to year, based on the climate, based on temperatures, based on, you know, a number of factors that could, that it could vary. So we did, we did make cuts in all of the utilities based on the savings that we have seen from the energy savings project.
The water, if I might, the water under boiler plant was $17,500 in the 2019 budget, and it's reduced to $6,500 in this budget.
Correct.
That's where the water, we cut it.
And if you go by the number he gave us, it should be reduced by 90%.
If that number was, I...
I mean, that's, as a...
We reviewed numbers, obviously, when we prepared the budget. I don't remember them being that much of a difference, but there was a significant savings, that we were just losing water on a daily basis in order to run the system.
Okay. You'll have time to look at those, if you would just let me know what your thoughts are.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, before we do that, so it would be better to submit amendments to our own amendments beforehand? Would you like that, or are we just going to do that on the night of next Tuesday?
Well, if there's something, like, I think right now, listening to the conversation for this evening, $101,000 in planning and zoning seems to be a common number. So if we add that to the voting session this evening and vote that as an amendment, that could be done. If we're comfortable with it, fine. I, myself, the ones that I submitted, I will review those and probably come back with some different, but it would be up to the person who submitted.
Okay.
Okay.
So when we go to the voting session, when we're going to add or delete from the agenda...
You can.
We can, can we just add a general item of budget amendments?
Budget amendments.
Just budget amendments?
Yeah.
And not specific ones?
No.
At that point?
Right, at that point.
Okay.
But when we get to the point where we're at to vote, we will look at specific numbers.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment?
Mr. Rabo?
First, I'd like to address the, for what Mr. Urban said about the Hazleton Public Transit, and to get Mr. Morelli, you know, because he was not on the council when this occurred. In 2017, when the council was down at the Hazleton One Center, it was brought up about the routes that Hazleton Public Transit was doing, or was going to places like Beaver Meadows and McAdoo, and those areas within Carbon and Schuylkill Counties. Now, I, when I did the, looking into about the history of those routes, it was because certain, you know, people in those municipalities in Carbon and Schuylkill County would use the public transit to go to work in the industrial parks in Hazleton. So that's why those routes were established. So fast forward to today, we have, for the past, since 2017, when it was brought up about, you know, the public transit getting reimbursed for those areas, Mr. Urban brought up that with Mr. Sharp from Hazleton Public Transit, that those routes should be compensated by Carbon and Schuylkill Counties in lieu of what Luzerne County contributes. So I agree with Mr. Urban on that, and I still do to this day, and since Mr. Sharp, now, I would also add in the fact that now Hazleton Public Transit has moved their terminal from the downtown to the Hazleton Regional Airport. So that being said, I think that now it becomes a matter of, does the city, or, because they're, the airport and the public transit are both part of the Hazleton City, you know, the budget, the general fund, I think that the city now has to come up with, you know, the monies from those, from the public transit to compensate for the increase, or they have to get from Carbon and Schuylkill County. That choice has to be presented to Mr. Sharp, he had two years to work on it, and I think it, you know, next year, you know, for this budget, would be for 2020, I think it's time, and the majority of the council members who were around last year sort of agreed, from what I saw, that if the, you know, they did not compensate the Carbon and Schuylkill Counties, then they would have, then those routes should be cut. And that's, I wanted to bring that up. But as far as the budget amendment goes, I think one budget amendment needs to be made, and that is for the 911 digital upgrade. I'm going to finish, as far as the digital upgrade goes, I think not the whole money, all the money for equipment and machinery needs to be utilized for the borrowing. I think that community development is sitting on close to $13 million. Eight million of that money is U-DAG money, which is unrestricted and can be utilized under federal statute for emergency services, for equipment purchases. Now, since it's an initial purchase, and it's a one-time purchase, it can be utilized. It is federally recognized. I checked with the federal statute, and you could call the hot office in Philadelphia if you need verification. So I think eight million of that can be utilized, and I'll send that over.
Thank you. I don't have any other people who indicate they want to speak at the work session, but it's open now. Anybody who would like to speak?
Good evening, Jason Carr, Salersburg, Pennsylvania. To Mr. Haas's point, I was able to partake in the pension session, pension board session, and the only resolution according, someone was talking to me and educating me one-on-one after the meeting, was that the only thing Luzerne County can do to at least affect the downturn trend of the pension obligations to the county and taxpayers is to lower the benefits that the county currently pays. So that's something that all of the, hopefully, new Republicans, majority Republican county council will consider in the new year. When you look at it, the return objective is 7%, so you're basing, the pension accounts right now are based on falsehoods, a 7% return objective. Mr. Azuri said over the next seven years, the expectation of return is only 4%. So there's a 3% difference that we're running on over the next seven years, which is just putting us more behind. But if you actually lower the expectation down to 4%, that means you're mandated by the state to increase your yearly pension obligations. So when you look at it as well, he said that there's $4.5 million being paid out more than what is being contributed to the fund itself. So the state of Pennsylvania was able to move to a hybrid plan, and I believe also a 100% 401K mandated plan. So I would ask Mr. Pedri if he could coordinate with somebody from the state to possibly come in and give a presentation on how they made the transition. As well, the state obviously is not funded at 100%. So I believe that can happen for both non-union as well as unionized employees, if it's negotiated with the unions. So that's all I have, but I greatly appreciate the opportunity as well. I fully support Ms. Houx and Mr. Haas's recommendations on the budget, recommendations that they have.
Mr. Griffith first, and then, Mr. Griffith's hands up first.
First of all, thanks for all the hard work on trying to trim the budget. I know it takes a lot of time to look over all these numbers and put some stuff together. So I appreciate the hard work of some of the members of council that have stepped up and cut the budget in places where they feel they can cut them, and hopefully you'll be successful in getting the tax increase taken away, or at least minimized as much as possible. The intergovernmental is something that needs to go away, and I appreciate the input on that. For LCCC, they do have a surplus, and she was correct on what she said as far as the foundation and all that, but they do also have a surplus. Maverick Strategies, I spoke about that when you were going to approve that contract, and it was voted on by Ms. Wakis, actually. She voted to approve that Maverick Strategies. So I certainly appreciate the fact that she's seen the light and now thinks it's not a good idea, because it really wasn't a good idea when we got it. And I would like to see somebody from Maverick come in and tell us where they found that million dollars from, and why the state legislatures didn't bring it to our attention, and why do we pay them to do it? It'd be interesting to know the answer to that. If they're so, if they were so diligent to bring that information to the county manager, why didn't they just, why didn't the legislatures just bring it to us directly, instead of paying Maverick? Maverick does have a 60-day cancellation clause in their contract. So if you vote to cancel that contract, you have 60 days to do it. You don't have to wait till six months. It's right in their contract, 60 days. So that's, that's easy enough to do. If you take that out of the budget, you just notify them that 60 days later, they're no longer needed. RFP for fleet services, I noticed there was an RFP out there for fleet services, yet we have a position out there for a mechanic in Roden Bridge. Are we going to hire a mechanic, or are we going to hire out for fleet service? I don't know if we're going to do both, but it seems kind of redundant to me. And we also need to cut the positions, we need to cut the positions in the budget where we have a coroner who's budgeted for $53,000, now make it $65,000. Again, I said once before to this council that the manager holds a gun to your head when he hand, when he hires a person at a different number than you approved in your position in the budget. He, you folks approved the budget for $53,000 for a coroner, and he hired a guy for $63,000. So he's holding a gun to your head to make sure you pay this guy $63,000 now. I don't think that's right. I don't think you should have to do that. He should live within the guidelines that this council passes on a salary. If you pass 53, that's all he can pay, unless he comes to... If you pass 53, that's all he can pay, unless he comes to council and gets approval to change that. The 500 fund for records retention, when was that audited last, for the, for the records that we're collecting that $5 fee for, and a $3 fee and all that? And why are we not using that to offset the cost of the info solutions in personatory and clerk of courts? We can use that money to offset that cost. It's, it, and I don't know when it was audited last. When was the records retention fund audited last would be an interesting question, because that's supposed to be audited every year. Thank you.
Yes.
Joe McKay from Exeter. I'd like to, Mr. O'Neill, I usually write him about the Water Street Bridge, but about a month ago, they did fix holes on the bridge, and it's back to where it should be. One more thing about the lobbies, you guys put a, there was a lot of discussion tonight on it, right? I have something in my hand I brought up a month ago about West Wyoming, Wyoming Little League, but it was a grant, a grant writer, it wasn't the lobbyist group that got them the money, and the grant writer took $7,000. It's going on for two years right now. So what would stop these lobbyists from doing the same thing out of that, what, million dollars they got? What would stop them from taking, putting their hands in and dipping money out before they give it to the county and that, you know? Do you guys have watchdogs on something like this?
We have a contract.
Do you?
We have a contract.
Okay. One more thing. What's going on the last month? The Democratic Party in Luzerne County is finished. John Udichak resigned, he was a United States Senator. His lobbyist, chief of staff, took over as a lobbyist, he's part of the lobbyist group. So what is going on here with the, you guys letting them take control of the council, too? It's, it's just sad to see this going on, and, I don't know, you know, the Democratic chairman in the county resigned, the fifth district chairman, he was in command for two weeks, and he resigned, his wife was vice chairman, she resigned. Come on, we got to get this county back on shape and get it under control, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Home rule was supposed to streamline our government and reduce the overspending. But if you look at this budget as it's proposed, without any modification, it reflects a nearly 28% increase in size, in spending, from when we started back in 2012. Where's the streamlining? Where's the cutting in the spending? It's just going crazy. It needs to stop. I agree with Ms. Wake on removing the merit raises. You can't come after us, the people of this county, with a 5% increase in our taxes, and then turn around and give merit raises. Just not done. No corporation does this, no private business does it. When you have to raise your prices and stuff, you don't go giving the employees raises. I realize that we are under contract with a lot of the employees, and that's understandable. But for the ones that aren't, they've been getting raises, pretty much right along since home rule started. Think they can forego it. And pretty much you're talking about management. So if management can't maintain the budget without asking us for more money, then maybe they're not quite doing their job the right way. These are things you have to look at, these are things you consider. When you run a business, that's what you do. We need a lot of cuts. The divisions need to be looked at, certain ones, I think, do need to maintain what they have, possibly even have some increases, but there's some of them that can take some drastic cuts. I do appreciate all the work that's been done by many of you to look at this budget and reduce it down. But it needs to go a lot further. We still have a lot of work ahead of you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Can we recess, Mr. Chair, between the next one?
Yeah, well, we're going to adjourn first, okay? Ms. Sabin?
Yes.
And Mr. Perry? What do you think, 10-minute recess? Is that good? Thank you.